We are going to start this board meeting with a proclamation that I'd like for Board Member Hyatt to please read for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the LGBTQ+ History Month Proclamation. Whereas Alleah County Public Schools is committed to creating a safe and welcoming environment for all students, families, staff members, and visitors, environment free from discrimination and harassment, and whereas LGBTQ+ Americans have and continue to make great and lasting contributions to our society, and whereas providing a high-quality education is essential to allowing LGBTQ+ youth and teens to reach their full potential, and whereas statistics show that LGBTQ+ youth and teens face a higher risk of harassment and violence, and as a consequence, experience higher rates of depression and suicide nationwide, and whereas LGBTQ+ youth nationwide also experience more absenteeism and underachievement, and are more likely to drop out of school due to harassment and discrimination, all of which pose significant barriers to achieving their full potential, and whereas Alleah County Public Schools has in place a number of policies prohibiting harassment and bullying with specific references to discriminatory actions based on sexual orientation, transgender status, or gender identity, and whereas Alleah County Public Schools has and continues to provide training on awareness of the needs of LGBTQ+ students, including the prevention of harassment and bullying, and whereas the district recognizes the ongoing importance of addressing this issue and supporting our LGBTQ+ students, and whereas LGBT History Month was established in 1994 by an educator in Missouri named Rodney Wilson. Now therefore be it resolved that Alleah County Public Schools joins school districts and other entities across the nation in recognizing October of 2021 as LGBTQ+ History Month, signed this 19th day of October 2021, Leonetta McNeely, Ph.D., Chairman, Carly Simon, Ph.D., Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. I'd like for us to now adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved, and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And now we need to look at the approval of the regular school board minutes, beginning with September 21st, 2021, and October 5th, 2021. Dr. Paulson, as we said last board meeting, you certainly can share with your colleagues, and then we will have to table whatever so that our staff will be able to go back, look at the videos, and agree that that is correct. I couldn't hear you.
I don't think they will on this, but let's find out before we say it. All right.
We need to have a motion to approve the amendments.
Okay.
I move, we accept the amendments as presented.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Some discussion.
All right. I thought I asked for discussion. Okay, Mr. Dr. Paulson.
I want to make an amendment. Do I get a second? Anybody second amendment for me?
Could you?
We don't know who.
It's about Dr. Simon. Let me read it. She wrote this, and I'm just trying to do what they've been saying for the last two months. "I have looked at the policy and the policy states summary, and based on what he," I guess pointing to me, "sent and what he said are not the same thing. We are not by policy required to transcribe the meetings, and I think it is something for the board to think very carefully that if a board member would like to rewrite, rewrite the meeting, that can be problematic in the future, and this aligns with what the policy said. I don't think it realigns with what the policy said, and I think it's trying to insult another board member." The new minutes, what I would propose are, Dr. Simon, "I have looked at the policy and the policy states summary, and based on that, we are not by policy required to transcribe. This aligns with what the policy said." That's exactly what people want.
Attorney Delaney would like to respond, and then Mrs. Surtin.
Certainly, I defer to the board members, but just at this point, I thought you were asking a question of me, Dr. McNeely, and I would just say at this point, we've got a motion on the floor for the amendments, and that's been seconded. Dr. Paulson's offered his amendment to the minutes. If all the other board members understand what that is, this would be the point where we either have discussion or a second of Dr. Paulson's amendment.
Madam Chair, I'll second Dr. Paulson's amendment.
Absolutely, but Attorney Delaney, this is my understanding, and I hear what Dr. Paulson just stated, but for the mere fact that we have our secretaries here, and they are not going to go back and revisit this unless they can possibly look at the video, and I think that's only fair for our employees.
Yeah, well, can I speak to that?
What I would say in response to that is our meetings are run by Robert's Rules of Orders, and Robert's Rules of Orders state that a member of this board can offer an amendment to the meetings. Now, if a majority of the board agrees with Dr. Paulson or any other board member's proposed amendment, then that's the version of the minutes that would be adopted. We all understand that there is the accountability of the video, and people certainly can work from their own memory about what was actually said at that meeting, but that's up to the collective will of the board members on how they remember the meeting occurring, or what version of the minutes they would like to adopt.
Thank you, Attorney Delaney. I'm going to listen to Mrs. Surtin, Dr. Simon, and then back to Paulson.
Mr. Paulson, ma'am.
I, the, what I, the discussion point that I'd like to add, it sounds like the amendment from Dr. Paulson was to revise this paragraph, and we all as a board received the request from our superintendent if we would, would send those to the staff beforehand so that they could make the, try to make the adjustments. So I just, I, I, I thought that there was a meeting that was held prior to, to tonight. I can't recall the date, and that, that was, you know, with Dr. Paulson and staff to try to come to some conclusion about that, because in a prior meeting, I had made the, made the comment that I thought the meeting, our policy states that the minutes are a summary of what happened, not a transcription of that, and so that was, that's my, my take on it. So I, for me, for me, what is here, I, I don't see any, any reason to revise it, but.
Thank you, Mrs. Surtin. Dr. Simon.
So our last board meeting, we discussed this, and I believe I was given direction to meet with Dr. Paulson, Mr. Delaney, and the two, our two staff members, Ms. Green and Ms. Peck. We did invite Mr. Paulson to join us, and he denied our request, and so we met with Mr. Delaney and us to discuss how to, to move forward in this aspect, because I think staff was feeling very much that they needed more guidance on what to expect. So I did email you all the request to align with the policy that submissions to adjust the board be submitted in writing. We would be able to provide the video and transcription so all board members would have the ability to really review how the altercations of the minutes are in comparison to the transcripts and the video. We did not receive Mr. Paulson's amendment that he's presenting today in writing, so we had nothing that we could share with you all prior to the meeting, so you'd have just more information before you make your decision, but that was our hope. These, I've actually been talking to other entities about how this process is managed, and we're looking to improve this as well, because I think the staff works very hard on the minutes, and, I mean, they're just going to be limited when they come to a summary, because, you know, some people will see this summary in a different light, and so this would just help us function as an organization in a more effective and organized way, and that's why that request was submitted to you all.
Thank you. Dr. Paulson.
Which I have done. I've done exactly what Ms. Surtin wants. I have not put anything in. I've got the same words as she, Dr. Ms. Simon said. "I have looked at the policy," excuse me.
Dr. Simon.
Oh, Dr. Paulson, too. "I have looked at the policy and the policy states summary, and that's what I, I keep, I kept that in, but I thought it was kind of rude to say a board member would like to rewrite the meeting. I think it's a little presumptuous over, and I think it was a little rude what he said. It did not, or not the same thing." And all I doing is this, is I think this, this went beyond a summary. So I just made it where Dr. Simon, "I have looked at the policy and the policy states summary." That's what she said. I didn't say it. I'm just repeating it. And based on that, "we are not by policy required to transcribe." I think she transcribed. So she violated her own po, her own policy. This aligns with what the policy says. It's simple. It, people can go back, they know where to look, and they find out about that. Otherwise, we are violating what we, we proposed. And if you want to violate what you proposed, go ahead, but I'm not going to be, sit back and just look at it. And I didn't say anything else. I thought it was insulting, and I don't know why. I don't think I've ever written anything insulting. I tried to be, you say I transcribed, I just tried to, you said I did. I can't do that. I have to write a summary. So now, I'll do it one more time. "I have looked at the policy and the policy states summary, and based on that, we are not by policy required to transcribe. This aligns with what the policy said." That's taken right out of, out of Dr. Simon's words, and we're arguing over that. I mean, whatever I put out, you're going to argue. That is exactly what we should be doing, like you've been saying for four meetings. I try to do what you say, now that's wrong. It can't be right ever.
Now, we've had discussion. Let's call for the vote. Mrs. Surtin.
Aye.
Dr. Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Madam Chair, we're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
And there is a no, so it's, I didn't get your vote, Mrs. Surtin.
No, I said no.
Three, two. So at this point, I will get with.
Dr. McNeely, one moment. So at this point, we hit, the motion to amend the minutes has passed.
It passed.
And then we need to have a vote on the adopting the minutes as amended.
All right. Thank you so much, Attorney Delaney. We have voted, the amendment passes. Now we need to vote for the approval of the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Paulson?
I said aye.
I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry.
Well, you are sorry. Thank you. Okay, all right.
I'm so sorry. Sorry.
How many times are you going to say that?
Okay. Okay. All right. Mr. Hyatt.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. Thank you so much.
Can I just say one more thing? I have a copy of this to give you, so you don't have to go, it's got what should be eliminated, what was added, it's only one word, and then what, so we'll make it easier on you ladies, okay?
Mrs. Surtin.
So I, I, I would, I would, I would like, I think it would be fair to the staff if we, or emailed the staff those.
Yeah, from now on, I will.
I couldn't hear you, Mrs. Surtin.
I said, I think it would be, be fair and good, in honoring what Dr. Simon proposed in the email to us, that we would email staff the week before so that they would have time to be able to do what was asked of us versus coming into the meeting and us having, having the discussion there. So that was, that was, that's my.
Dr. Surt, I mean, Dr. Simon.
So, thank you. We actually, I don't think we need the amendments the week before, because you do have that time that you would need to do, you know, the reading and reviewing of the minutes, but if we could at least just have it, you know, even before the meeting so we can make sure we get copies to you all so you have that information, because I think you'll help, it'll help with the process.
I've done that all the time in the past. Didn't do any good, though, but I'll do it.
I, I don't think my staff has received anything in writing in your amendments, and I think that's part of.
That's not true. That's not true.
But prior to a meeting, they haven't, and neither have the board members, and that's part of why we're hoping to clarify this situation, because I think we're struggling to, to do this the way that you would appreciate.
Thank you, Superintendent, and colleagues. Let me go back. I think we have now approval of the regular school board workshop minutes from October 6th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. In.
October 6th.
I saw, I saw your hand, Mrs. Green. I can't hear you.
October 5th.
Okay. I said the 6th. We did.
The regular, the regular business meeting.
All right, let's go back. I was thinking that we handled the 21st and October 5th at the same time. Let's go back to October the 5th. Thank you, Mrs. Green. May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes from October 5th.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Now we are at the October 6th School Board Workshop Minutes. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you so much. At this point, we are going to have a board member and announcements, as well as the superintendent, and I see several lights. I'll start with you, Attorney Delaney. Okay, Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, Madam Chair. I actually, the, I want to revisit something that happened on October 5th in the meeting, the last regular board meeting. In reference to some comments that I made about the internal auditor position, position, I made a few comments in support of us approving that position, and my colleague, Dr. Paulson, said to me that there were some things that I said that were not true. And at the mic at that time, I asked Dr. Paulson what was true, what was untrue, and he didn't tell me anything specific that was untrue. And I said that I had documents to support the points that I made about that, and so tonight I want to give to my colleagues copies of those documents that I have to support the, the points that I made when I was supporting that position for the internal auditor position. So when I made those points last week or two weeks ago, what I said was that an internal auditor can review more of our financial transactions that we have and our business processes, and I, I couldn't leave it alone because for one, I felt that Dr. Paulson called me a liar from the dais, and that really, I felt insulted by that. But two, I worked over 25 years as a professional accountant, and I'm no, I don't say that as an expert, but I do have a good number of years of work experience, and so I come to looking at things from that particular, that's what I bring to this body here. And so the points that I made last week was that when we had, we purchased that property out on 143rd Street, that process, that we, it did not follow board policy, and that's important because we have the sales taxes assess money coming in, and we have our regular budget, and it's important that as stewards of taxpayers' dollars that we, we make sure, as the managers of this district, the five elected or the four electors and the one appointed person, we make sure that we have to sign off on things like that, and we have to vote to approve certain things, but that transaction, like it or not, it went straight up off the rails. So I'm going to share a few, few things with you guys here.
Thank you.
So I mentioned on October 5th, the policy, because I didn't have a whole lot of time, and I don't want to like take up a lot of time tonight, but I said that the cone of silence policy, 6324, was violated, and so I've given you all the packet that, and in that packet, it has documents, our board documents that came to us and that are internal operational documents, but the first one is RFQ 1920, which dealt with the commercial real estate services.
Are you on page one?
That's on page two.
Okay.
And at the bottom of page two, I highlighted what, how our, our entity defines the cone of silence, and what that means is the cone of silence is when we issue an RFQ or an RFP, that one that goes out, the people that are bidding, bidding, and their, their employees are not supposed to have any contact with board members or employees or things of that nature, from the time that RFP opens, the date that's stated in there, and until it comes to the board for us to vote on. And I've also included in this document on pages from three and back on some other pages that shows numerous correspondence between an entity that had submitted a proposal to, a response to the RFP. And I, the second point that I made was that the company that was awarded the contract did not submit a proposal during the time period that the RFQP was open. So they were with one company, they left that company and went to another company, and then we had to do a lot of finagling to try to get that in there. There's also a document in there around page 16 that documents that point. So, and, and our staff attorney at that time, Mr. Brian Moore, he even said, oh, I thought this was just a change in of, of a name or whatever, but they went to a whole new company at, when, after they were awarded. Also, there was all this communication still going on. We hadn't voted on this yet. We entered into a three-year contract with this company, Colliers International. I said on October 5th that there was no clause in that contract for us to exit out of that with or without cause, I mean, or without cause, if we give notice. I asked our attorney about that, and I was told one thing, but then it comes back, and it's, that's not the case. There's no percentage stated in there as to what we would pay them if we buy or sell something and they handle that for us, or if we lease something. There's no stating of that. I find it really odd if I, I didn't include in the contract, the City of Gainesville's contract that they have with Colliers International, it's a one-year contract, they can come out with or without cause, and with a 30 days' notice, there's a 4% fee if Colliers handles things for them. We don't have such a thing in this contract that we have with them. So we can come out with cause, meaning if they violate some policy of ours or something like that, and I really contend that they, they violated policy 6324 from the Jump Street, so we really shouldn't have ever been in, 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 in a, in a contract with them. The fourth point that I made is that representation with this contract is still not solidified. During a board meeting, I asked Mr. White, we were all on Zoom at the time, how we were, were being represented. He, he told me, or told us, that the seller is paying the commission fee, and I said, that wasn't my question. My question was how was Colliers International's, the salespeople, how were they representing us? And I got one answer also from our, our, the board's attorney, and then I got another answer from, in an email from, from Superintendent Clark, as well as Brian Moore, but in here, this document here, I've included, it shows that the realtors were really working both sides of the fence. They would say they represented the school district, but they were doing everything in their power to increase the value of the land for the seller. There's an email in here for that as well. So I contended back then that we paid too much for the land. I requested that we have a special meeting so that I could share this information with you all, but that was denied, just, we needed three votes for the chair to call, and then we only had two, but these are the types of things right here in processes that when we bring on an internal auditor, that he would look. We have internal controls and we have policies, so that there was supposed to be guardrails for staff to operate, for vendors to do business, you know, they know how they're supposed to do business with us, and clearly that didn't work this time, and that's really important because we, we want to, we, we have the fiduciary duty to the taxpayers. So they didn't just cheat me, and it's not about me trying to get a duo on a vote or to get any digs. This was really serious. We have a 12-year tax assessment, a lot of money coming in, and, and folks are so right to say that there's so much government waste and spending, so we have a duty to really be really cognizant, make ourselves aware of it, and we don't all have to be professionals or be professional accountants, but we do have to hold staff accountable, and the tone at the top has to be such that if there's a policy and our staff members have violated that policy, that they're swiftly dealt with discipline-wise, and that if there's a vendor, that we do what we say on this RFQ form here, that their contract could be voided and they can't do business with us under this particular guideline because they violated that policy. And this is here, this policy, this cone of silence is here to protect us as an entity so that we don't end up spending more than what we normally would have to spend, and the integrity of the purchasing process maintains and stays in place. So I don't know, I wanted to bring that back because as I said, on October 5th, when the comment was made that I didn't tell the truth, I have a whole binder full of emails here that I got, and I, I read them all, and I was able to compile them, and I don't want to bore you guys with all of that, but, but I did go through and a whole lot of other documents. They gave us the real estate services ranking on there. They told us the companies were interviewed, they weren't interviewed. They only interviewed one of them. They didn't interview Front Street, and then he comes back and they say, oh, that was a typo on there. So it's just, it's a lot of things that, that went wrong with this, and those are things that an internal auditor would catch, and he would advise Dr. Simon of those improprieties, or if things are going well. It's not just things that are, that are going wrong, but if things are going well, he'd also point that out, you know, but, but to just, to, I just, I wanted to, to bring this back up, because like I said, my, my personal integrity, I felt, was attacked on October 5th, and I let it slide out of, out of respect for the chair when you asked me not to, but I felt tonight I really needed to come back to that, to, to, to clear that up, and, and I, there's no ill will or anything, but I do, I felt strongly that And, and I, there's no ill will or anything, but I do, I felt strongly that I did have to come back to that, to, to, to address that. Thank you.
Need to make a slight reply.
Thank you, Ms. Surtin. I see, well, I see Mr. Hyatt's light. Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to sadly announce the passing of a, one of her wonderful retired teachers, Marilyn Adams, who spent her career teaching first grade at Idlewild. She's a personal friend, but she, she was as good a reading teacher as you could ever find. And there are a lot of adults right now that have had the benefit of her guidance and her teaching. And so I just wanted to, to send condolences to her, her family and close friends. And Mrs. Adams was just a very, very special teacher. And I just, I thought that should be recognized. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Paulson, is your light?
I can't, you've got, I can't see it. Yeah, but you can't see it hardly. I'm not going to get in a long one, but I'll, I'll answer some of this. First of all, I said that wasn't true because we were sitting there and saying, our district's in financial distress and it's not. And one of the reasons I would have said, and I didn't, I didn't want to get involved, but that money was the half-cent sales tax, which is allowed to be paid for, for land purchasing. So it wouldn't affect our financial position that we're in. So yes, it wasn't true that we were in a bad financial position. And just the other day, just yesterday or today, we met. When did we meet? Yesterday, right? And we're not in, in financial trouble. Yet you were told that last meeting by these people, by my fellow board member. So again, you say you wanted a special meeting. I did a lot of research and I mean, I won't go into all of it like Ms. Surtin has, but we actually had another meeting after we put a binder down. So I saw that as a, as a special meeting. And I wasn't sure whether I wanted to. And if you look, go back, it'll say, I understand, you know, your concerns, but we, we told the company to go, all five of us, where they were on the board then, to negotiate with, with the company. I'm not going to mention their name because they're in a lawsuit, those people that she said are separated. And we got three updates by our superintendent. Nobody ever said a word, not a word. We gave 5-0, go ahead and negotiate with them, 5-0.
Vote in a, in a workshop, Dr. Paulson.
Giving the nod ahead, you know what I'm talking about. You know, I, I sat there and listened to what you were saying. So then we, when we got to the meeting, we voted, we already had an estimate and we, and then we decided we were going to get out of that then. And then a year later, we got back, this was all happening in a year and a half. Then a year later, this is a year later after we've been in it. And at the last second, I changed my mind. And I, I said, you know, I could understand you, what you all were doing. Now she neglects to say, we had two more estimates after that and the company that bid on it was, even over it. So a lot went into it. And I think it'd be inappropriate for us to be talking while this lawsuit's going on in between people that were, used to work together. So did I say it's not true? I didn't call you a liar or anything, I just said, this is not true. We're telling, we were throwing our staff under the bus as a board member. I just couldn't take that. I'm, I'll defend our employees and I'll, I'll defend our staff and our teachers, everybody. Because I think they do a good job and I didn't think it was fair to them if people want to go back and look at the board meeting. We were throwing the staff under the bus. And you don't do that.
Madam Chair.
No, wait, no, I'm not, you don't, you don't do stuff like that.
I see your light, Mrs. Surtin, and I see Attorney Delaney's light as well. Who, who, is it you, Mrs. Russell? Well, Delaney's light is showing up. All right, Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So. I want to say, make sure that I, that I say this really clearly. We're not being sued by anybody. This deal is closed and we can talk about it till Jesus comes.
I didn't say that.
We're not being sued by anyone. But what I do want to say is that in the workshop, they came to us and Dr. Paulson's staff, this is not throwing staff under the bus, but if our staff behaves and acts inappropriately, they have to be called out. It has to be dealt with. It's not throwing anybody under the bus. But when they came to us in the workshop in February, there's documentation where they had already been negotiating and talking with the company about making a deal and about prices. Those salespeople submitted information that was not public to an appraiser to raise the price up on the property. There's, that's documented. It's in an appraisal report. It's in emails. That letter of intent from D.R. Horton should never have been sent to the real, to the appraisal company. Right? And if you look at the dates, you have to look at the dates of all of these things. I'm not making this up. My personal integrity, I'm sitting here talking to you as a fellow board member, but my personal integrity is on the line. And I'm not throwing staff under the bus if the staff behaves inappropriately. Staff has to be called out. And the, the scenario has to be called out. And unfortunately, sometimes that, that means that the person who was associated with making those decisions, it seems like they're being attacked. I'm not attacking anyone. I, I respect all of our employees as doing their job and when they do it well. But when things don't go right, you can't sugarcoat this. So I, I'm just going in with this right here. We had, that workshop was, we had the, RFQ came out in November, shortly after the sales tax was, was passed. Then we had the, the workshop in February. And, but all prior to that, a letter of intent was written, was drafted and written. That is all prior to the workshop that we had where we did, they said, they came to us and said, this land is available now. We just, they told us that it was the number one ranking, but we had already decided on building School Island Parker Road. So my intent and what I said was not to throw staff up under the bus. I was making the point about the reasons why we needed that position. And I'm going to tell you, I was quite offended by you telling me the things that I said that night were not true. And that's why I put together this packet. So if you look over it and you see, and you pay attention to the dates, pay attention to the dates. And I've highlighted some dates on some things in there, but you can see January 31st, 2019 is prior to the workshop we had.
I said our district is not in financial.
I never said our district was in financial trouble, Dr. Paulson. No, I did not in October 5th.
Go back and look.
Please do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to, I'm going to yield now. I'm not going to debate that. Thank you.
Thank you both colleagues. Dr. Simon.
Thank you. I do just want to clarify that when we proposed the auditor, we do have some concerns about we are not in financial trouble as an organization. However, in our departments, we have a considerable amount of cleaning up that needs to be done as far as like compliance, making sure that we weren't having double dipping in federal funding and making sure that we are spending monies appropriately. And these are the reasons that we have been doing this. I've been working on this since I've taken this position. There was a level of, you know, recon that had to be done, but we are working quite quickly to take care of it. And one of my recommendations and why we brought the auditor to the, the board is because we need to have this person in place to make sure that we are staying in compliance, financially compliance, as well as following our board policies. Thank you. I have quite a few announcements. So I first want to announce that we have our 2021, 2022 STEM Excitement and Excellence Grant recipients. So Jessica Campbell from Buaholt High School received $4,770 for sparking hands-on fun with robots and AP Computer Science Principles. Ricky Quintana from Howard Bishop Middle School received over $6,000 in, for Gizmo Me. He also received over $3,000 for Hawk Soar. Chris Dotick and Kelly Costumo received $5,000 for Robotics Reboot. Nathaniel Peg and Natalia Peg from Hawthorne Middle and High School received $5,000 in the Student STEAM Success. So we're very proud of that work. Tomorrow is Unity Day and we ask that people can, if they can, find their orange clothing to show unity for kindness, acceptance and inclusion, which shows a visible message that no one should ever have to experience bullying. Tomorrow, we are also having our Latchua County Public Schools Job Fair at the MLK Center from 4:00 to 5:30. We had our first TAC and that's the Teacher Advisory Committee Meeting on the 13th. And I think it was a great success. It was so successful that the teachers actually requested to have an additional meeting to replace for this introduction meeting. So we will have our four meetings that we had in the bylaws plus the intro meeting. So I think that was exciting. I think there's a lot of discussions about how we can collaborate and really work on our systems to how to bring that relationship with the district and the, the teachers and streamline it and work better. I also am pleased to say that our Beyond the Bell tutoring, we had 494 visits to our tutoring site. That's 185 students that were tutored in our first month since September 15th. Our most popular grades are fourth and fifth grade with 44% of all of our students. And October 12th was our highest participation to date. We had 45 students, 36 were elementary and nine were secondary. We have virtually trained 100% of our Latchua County Public School teachers in our new illuminate program for our progress monitoring to help us prep for AIMS. 90% of our teachers we have surveyed and they agreed and strongly agreed that they felt confident accessing illuminate. We also have a collaboration with our ACC, PTA and ESC and we have fall events on our calendar that also include assistive technology workshops. So our assistive tech, our assistive technology workshop is Tuesday, October 26th. Our Help Me, Help My Child workshop is Tuesday, November 9th. And our Dyslexia and Dysgraphia workshop is going to be Thursday, December 9th. And you can find more information on our website. And that's all for today. Thank you.
Great announcements. Mrs. Surtin, your light is back on? Okay, Dr. Paulson, it's your light. Okay, very good. Seeing no other board members' announcements, we'll move now into our citizen input. And I'd like to read a statement before our citizens, we have quite a few citizens, and who have requested to speak. To the members of the public joining us this evening, welcome again. And we are glad that you're here. I hear some feedback, guys in the, if you can help me with the feedback. If you wish to address the board, we ask that you fill out the public comment form, which we have available on both sides of the boardroom. I will call on individuals in the order that I received the forms. We may also have virtual participants calling into the meeting to enter or to offer public comment. If we're not able to get to your comments in the initial 15-minute period for the public comment, we will certainly do that at the end of our business meeting where you will still have an opportunity to share. Please remember that you are going to address the board on the item of the agenda where we are. And I will say later, once we get into action items, which citizens will be speaking at that point. The first citizens that we have are for general comments to the board. Please remember that each individual will have two minutes to address the board. Please focus on issues and input while avoiding personal attacks. If your comments become disorderly or if your conduct interferes with the orderly progress of this meeting, you will be asked to leave or you may be escorted out of the meeting if necessary. And I'm going to have to, and the former chair, the chairs after me will be reading this comment every single time because of some of the things that have occurred in previous meetings. So I hope you can understand and put up with that. The first citizen that we have is Commissioner Rodney Long. Candidate, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. So far, it's been a very interesting meeting. I haven't been here quite some time. It's been a very interesting meeting. I am here as a candidate that's running for Florida Senate District 8, which represents Latchua, Marion and Putnam County. I am on a three-county tour, visiting all the elected governing bodies within these three counties, including all the school board districts. I am doing that because I want to make sure that I get my message loud and clear to all local elected officials. And that message is this. In Tallahassee, they believe that one size fits all in Tallahassee. In Tallahassee, they do not believe in representative democracy. In Tallahassee, they believe that one size fits all. I don't believe that. I believe that government that's closest to the people is the best government for people. You all have been under attack, all local governments have been under attack by the majority party in Tallahassee when it comes to local government preemptions, unfunded mandates and car shifts. What I want to say to you all tonight as your next state senator, you will have a friend in Tallahassee that will push back and represent you when it comes to local government. When it comes to education, the Constitution, Article 2 says that education is paramount to teaching our children in this state. But the funding is not paramount. But as your next state senator, I will work to make sure that funding for our students in this state will increase from 46 nationally until a top 10 percentile. In closing, I'd like to meet with each of you individually because I want to know what your issues and concerns are as a school district. So with that, I thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak. I can be reached on my website, www.rodneylongfloridasenatdistricate.com. Thank you very much and I would appreciate your support.
And Dr. McNeely, I'm just going to have to let you know, Dr. McNeely, when, when we get to two minutes, I'm just going to speak up and let you know because our light system is set for three. But I think you've announced we're, citizens have up to two minutes tonight, so I'll let you know.
Hello, my name is Ron Rawls, Pastor Greater Bethel AME Church. And when I arrived here at the Pastor Greater Bethel in November of 2020, the thing that alarmed me was the achievement gap between black and white students. And that was a strong concern that I had, that I wanted to make sure that we were doing things to close that achievement gap because the achievement gap is directly retired, connected to the wealth gap. You all have been doing a wonderful job standing up as it relates to masks and vaccines and things like that. There's some people that you're not going to convince that 727,000 people have died because of COVID. You're not going to convince that 58,000 people in the state of Florida have died. You're not going to convince that if this was the Olympics, that we would be on the stage in the top three, pounding our chest that almost 60,000. Some people are not going to convince. You keep fighting to get a fight. But I have, I have a concern. I think that we've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, led astray, and this thing is running them up. We seem to be focused on one issue. The achievement gap is still there. When we hired our superintendent, I was excited because it seemed that she was interested in. When we hired our superintendent, I was excited, because it seemed that she was interested, instead of closing our schools down, invested in the schools on the east side of town, and making sure that we got a quality education. But I'm concerned, I don't think we're doing two things at the same time. We're able to multitask. Madam Superintendent, I've been trying to get on your schedule. I want to be your friend, want to be a supporter. Been trying to get on your schedule, have not been able to get on your schedule to have a conversation about some ideas that I have about closing the achievement gap. Let's not get so caught up in this vaccine stuff and this mask stuff that the things that are most important, we overlook and not address. The achievement gap is directly connected to the wealth gap. Let's deal with the business of the day.
Good evening, Dr. McNeely, board members, Dr. Simon. My name is David Kaplan, and I'm the father of an ACPS student. I want to thank you for continuing to do your best to serve our students, families, and teachers. I appreciate that the service on this board requires you to come to this chamber every two weeks, prepared to debate and vote on a wide variety of topics, so your efforts are very much appreciated. I know it's hard work. It's made in a public forum. You're making decisions that affect tens of thousands of students and their families, and so it's also very serious work, and I know that you take it very seriously. So here's the but. But there are times that as a member of the public sitting in this chamber, as a dad of an ACPS student, I'm disappointed by the content and tone of the discussion from the dais. And so I come here tonight to share my frustration, but also with an empathy and understanding of your challenging job, so I've got a couple of requests that I'll hope you consider. Number one, it's critical that board members come to each meeting well-prepared to discuss the merits of agenda items in detail. Substantive discussion and decision-making can only occur when everyone knows all of the agenda items' details and are prepared to courteously debate the topic. Constructive debate is also only possible when all board members can be heard and speak clearly using the microphone for all discussion. Number two, relevant to tonight's discussion about the minutes, you follow a specific parliamentary procedure called Robert's Rules of Order, so I strongly urge you to redouble your commitment to following these procedures under the guidance of Attorney Delaney and planning a board workshop if refreshment is necessary. You know, there's six steps. A member is recognized, makes a motion, someone seconds the motion, including the chair for small boards like y'all, the presiding officer restates, and then there's a debate. And I want to just give you seven hints for effective debate. They come out of Robert's Rules of Order. One person speaks at a time. All speakers must be recognized before speaking, so we know who has the floor, so it's not an argument, it's just a debate. All comments intended for another member are made through the chair. Comments are confined to the current motion or the amendment. Members do not complain. Only make or discuss the motion's pros and cons. No cross-conversation, no interruptions, no intimidations, and no verbal attacks on other members. We get through that debate, then we can have the vote, the yays, the nays, and move on to other business.
Madam Chair, we're at two minutes.
So I appreciate your work, and I would just very much appreciate and respect that we follow those rules so that we can have a more informed and courteous decisions coming from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Tracy Emma Bright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board. Thank you for allowing me this moment. I want to thank you for the proclamation. As a queer woman in Alachua County, I grew up here. I went to Buchholz. I graduated in 1989. You do not find queer people then. You do, but they don't tell about it. They don't talk about it. There was no support for it. So this proclamation, which I am so appreciative of, is really important to our community and our students, because there are plenty, plenty of LGBTQ+ kids in our schools, and they don't all face a home of support, of love and acceptance. And then they might go to school and face more harm to them. So I very much appreciate that you are making Alachua County schools safer for our LGBTQ youth. They thrive. I have children who belong to it. I have students who belong to it. And when they're loved and accepted and embraced for their authentic selves, they do much better. I have this safe zone in my classroom and my flag all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a big problem in Alachua County schools right now. Parents are upset and feel unheard. We're tired of being told how to parent our children. We're tired of being divided by these intrusive mandates. We're tired of children being manipulated to fear each other and not being allowed to have normal childhoods where they laugh and play with their friends and, God forbid, hug each other. Our children are suffering while the superintendent plays politics and participates in a power struggle with the governor. Our children are suffering while the superintendent parades herself on CNN for attention. Our children are suffering while the superintendent pushes fear antics and division. Our children are suffering while the superintendent breaks the rules, all while expecting our children to follow her overbearing rules. Our children are suffering under this poor leadership. It's time to do something about it. It's time to hold her accountable. It's time this board votes her out. She is in violation of her contract that states that she must, and I quote, "maintain and keep current, a valid certification and administration and supervision or equivalent as issued by the Florida Department of Education." She is not in compliance with her contract. This, along with many other problems she has caused in our school system, is grounds for her termination. I'm asking the board tonight to motion for her termination and begin the search for a qualified candidate that cares about our community and advocates for our students. I'll end this with a quote from Israel Moore Ayver. "True leaders do not make choices with reference to the opinion of the majority. They make choices based on the opinion of the truth, and the truth can come from either the majority or the minority." Thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Good evening, board. Thank you for being here and, as always, working hard. I'm here tonight to speak to how the board can move forward. Obviously, we all have some concerns about how things are going right now. I know that when you guys all ran for office, you had the intent to make the lives of children, teachers, and staff better. And currently, things aren't going that well. You know, and it's not your fault entirely. It's partially the pandemic. It's partially the world we live in with the divisiveness. But you guys can make a change for the better. And so what I am hoping is that you all can come together, whether you're Republican or Democrat or Independent, I don't care. What I want from you guys is for you to come together to accomplish your mission, which is to make the lives of children, staff, and teachers better in Alachua County. And in order to do that, you have to listen to each other, and you have to work with each other, and you have to think about the bigger picture and not yourselves. I haven't been coming to the meetings, because I'm honestly a little bit sick of talking about masks. And I want to, just like Reverend Rawls, I want to talk about other things. I'm ready to move forward. We need to address the opportunity gap. We need to address the things that Dr. Simon had in her awesome presentation that she hasn't been able to do. And I want the board to come together to make this happen. You have the opportunity to do it. You just need to put some faith in your leaders that you've chosen, and let her do her job, and give her the things she needs to make this district a better district for everyone. So that's my message. Just please support her. Give her a chance to do what you asked her to do. And let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The other citizens that have put in your format, we will hear from you, but I need to stop to see about our callers. Please, please go forward.
And Madam Chair, we would have time for one caller, probably.
Caller, you have two minutes with the board.
Good evening. This is Lisa Green. I've called in before. I have my sons. They go to Fort Clark and Buchholz High School. I'm listening to many of your supporters tonight talk about getting along, that it doesn't matter if they're Democrat, if they're Republican, or whatever they are. They should get along for the good of all of the children. Many of us have been saying that from the very beginning, but it has been made evidently clear by a few of you on the board, you're looking for your future political aspirations. Your interviews, your networks, your alignment with your parties tells us otherwise. So I find it kind of comical that the same people tonight talking about uniting are the biggest dividers in this county. I heard the superintendent talk about wearing orange for unity, unity, at the beginning of this board meeting. I'm certain you can figure out who I'm speaking of. Where was the unity from that one board member to another board member? You're very good at throwing things out there for others to follow, but you're not following them yourselves. And I would like to thank Dr. Paulson, who has been amazing in his many decades of service to Alachua County schools. He's been there for all the right reasons. He's been there for all of the kids. The same for Mr. Hyatt. I thought two others of you were there, but watching your behavior this past year has really made a lot of voters question it. Now we're turning school board meetings into political infomercials for your friends? What did that have to do with academics? What has this board done for academics for Alachua County students at a time where they need academics more than ever? I'm almost out of time, but I beg you, what have you done regarding academics for all of the students? I have seen nothing from this superintendent regarding academics for students. Instead, she's made it a...
Madam Chair, we're at two minutes.
Caller, your two minutes have expired.
Thank you. And will you remind me when we get to the end of the business meeting with our citizens for the callers?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, we will move into our consent agenda. Dr. Simon?
Board Chair, I would like to recommend that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in Items 2 through 11.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And just a minute, let me see who the first speaker is for action.
Mr. Andrew.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Simon. Change order number four for Project SBACA 1805, Idaho Wild Elementary School redesign and redevelopment. This change order adds $549,918.88 to the contract, revising the contract total to $16,160,762.48, and represents an increase in the costs for a passive rate-on mitigation system, concrete slab for central energy plant, expendable BDA system for Building 17, replacing existing ductwork with externally insulated ductwork, Building 7 roof redesign, replace existing HVAC supply and return diffusers, and change mechanical system controls from KMC to Honeywell. This change order adds 61 consecutive calendar days to the contract time. The recommended action by the superintendent is that the school board approve Change Order Number Four in the amount of $549,918.88.
So moved, Madam Chair.
It has, the motion is in for, to approve the, this particular item that Mr. Andrew just shared. It's been moved by Mr. Hyatt, seconded by Mrs. Surtin. Discussion?
I actually have a question.
All right, Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then, Dr. Simon.
Can I direct my questions to Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew, the items that are listed here for, that are, I guess, the change, the change order, is this, I see the radon thing. There was a testing that was done that denoted that we needed to have that additional stuff, like all of this stuff here on existing buildings that didn't come down. These are buildings that we left up at the old former Idaho, well, the Idaho Wild, I'm calling them Prairie of Idaho is what I'm thinking when I say former Idaho Wild.
Quite a bit of it is on buildings that did not come down, you know, like Building 7. Some of it with the passive rate-on mitigation system. Part of the new construction has that in place, and then instances where we needed to mitigate, it's being installed as well.
Thank you.
All right, if there is no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Chief Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Simon. I'm here bringing to you the FSAT District Assessment Tool for this year. As you know, this is a lengthy process, that we do all of our traditional schools plus charter schools as required by the state of Florida following the Stoneman Douglas Act. It is mandated, and we have to report it to the DOE yearly. A little background, the FSAT tool is administered at the schools. It includes law enforcement, fire, facilities, and district staff that go out and conduct these surveys every year. It is a lengthy process. And then the money that comes from the submission of the FSAT every year is the school hardening funds. I cannot go any further without thanking some staff members that worked diligently over a couple months to get this done. I'd like to thank Scott Jamison, Velma Fernandez, and of course, my second, Angela Cheshire. She's instrumental as well. Before you should have the District Best Practices FSAT, and I'm just gonna touch on a few of the items. A lot of the information contained in it is security sensitive, so we'll just hit some of the highlights. Of course, the FSAT has been submitted for all the schools, coordinated, once again, with fire, police, and facilities. We've moved forward. All threat assessment teams, as mandated by the state this year, will receive threat assessment training by December 31st. We're currently providing multiple trainings to all the staff that need that, that are on these district or the school threat assessment teams. All K-12 schools are in compliance with the state personnel requirement. We're continuing to install those electronic locks, as we mentioned in last year's. It's a lengthy process, if you can imagine, going through every door in all the schools. We're continuing with additional fencing and also other security measures to better protect our schools. The Need for Law Enforcement BDAs has been identified once again in several schools. And what that is, it's a bidirectional antenna amplifier that allows law enforcement radios to communicate within our schools. The strategy, once again, for this year is to continue to add additional cameras, fencing, and other security measures to help improve our schools' security. And the timeline for these, of course, it's an ongoing process. It's year-round. We continue to do it throughout the summer months during the school year, and we are making progress in getting our schools safer.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Item Number Two?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly... Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I certainly want to, uh, thank Chief Hamilton and his team, uh, this is a lot of work, and, um, and, and of course, I, I know that they're, in their heart, among, above everything else, is keeping our children and employees safe, and, um, and it's not easy, and, um, I'm, I'm sure all of us really appreciate, uh, the detail that goes into this, and making sure things are done right, uh, for our children and employees, so, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Attorney, attorney?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Simon. Action item number three is adoption amendments and repeal of board policies. This is the first reading. As you, I'm sure, remember, the board held a workshop on October sixth to discuss various policies that are being proposed for adoption amendment and repeal. Most of these policy amendments, as you heard on the sixth, were recommended by the board's policy consultant, Neola, and will align with updates to various legislation over the last few years, and, um, there are also some revisions that have come from staff as well that we went through. The updates that I have for the board are, as we talked about at the workshop on October sixth, there were quite a few that were left with some options that needed to be chosen that staff were still reviewing. Your, the newest packets and what is attached to the board agenda includes the revisions, there are still a few that we're working on, so I was just going to go through really quickly, I don't, won't go through the whole thing that I did on the sixth, but just to tell you which ones we have now and which ones we're still working on. So, the first one is policy number twenty-two sixty-six, which was the big nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, sex education and activities, um, this was a pretty extensive new policy, and staff has done a lot of work on it, but we are still working on revisions that are contained within pages one sixty-seven to one seventy-four, and you'll see that there's still options there that staff has- The next one, fifty-five eleven, which is the code of student conduct, the dress code, uh, we've made quite a few changes to that one, and there may still be some additional changes coming, however, the way it is now may also end up being the way that it, it comes to the, the public hearing. Fifty-six ten is the out-of-school suspension expulsion of students, that one is completed and drafted, the fifty-six ten point zero-two in school suspension, after-school detention is completed, um, fifty-six eleven, due process is completed, sixty-eight thirty-five, internal audits, we have made some pretty significant revisions you'll want to take a look at that we have completed. Also sixty-eight forty, auditor selection committee, which is the same as the internal audit one, we've made some, um, revisions and reviews, we've selected version two, there were two versions to look at and to choose from. Eighty-four oh-five, school safety and security is completed, eighty-four oh-seven, safe school officers was mostly completed, however, we realized one thing that we forgot to do, there's some blank lines in there, we just need to make one more quick edit to that one, it won't change a lot of the substance, but we'll get that one done, and then eighty-five hundred, food and nutrition services program has been completed. And at this time, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed adoption amendment and repeal to various policies as set forth in the attached documents for advertising, and to schedule a public hearing on this on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty.
Is there a motion to approve item number three?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'd like to say something. Remember when you gave us that meeting in your couple hours?
Uh, your microphone, I don't believe, is on?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr.
Just this presentation, it was a couple hours.
Yes, sir.
And I came up to you afterwards, I actually enjoyed it. I meant that, I, it's, I don't, it's hard to make people enjoy two or three, two or two and a half hours of reading policies, but you did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to tell you that.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes five zero. Ms., Ms., Attorney, attorney, I see Mr. Gilbreth walking up behind you, who's doing the present?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, well, action item number four is the school board member residence area redistricting, this is the first reading, um, Mr. Gilbreth is here to provide additional information at this time, so I'd like to turn it over to him.
Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent, it's great to be here, I was just going to get set up, I didn't get a chance to do that before the meeting started, so I have a short presentation for you today. We're going to cover a little bit of what we covered in the workshop, um, we're going to respond to the requests that we got from the board members as well as the citizens, and then open it back up for discussion. Might need some help from the AV team.
Uh, can we have some help?
Sit down, one down here. Let's, um, let me just give it a minute, it's going to boot back up. I need your help to log in. I just have to log in. Okay. I don't know. I don't see it. Okay. Yeah, I have the flash drive down there, so it should come right up. There we go. These guys. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, sorry about that delay, again, it's, it's, it's great to be here, um, we're going to be talking again about the options that we presented at the board workshop, uh, we're going to be responding to the board and the citizen requests that we got, um, over the past two weeks since we presented, uh, and be here to answer your questions. So, I want to start again with how I started the last presentation, with the, the, the statement that, "These are my lines and my team's lines that we've drawn, we're not getting input from anybody else, these are lines that we've drawn with respect to the census data." And so, we're using census data, reviewing population estimates, and looking at what we have available right now from the census. We're considering your input as well as input from the citizens, and we have some criteria we have to follow. Number one, total population is the guiding legal criteria for at-large voting districts, we're formulating at-large voting districts. We want to create compact, contiguous, and community-focused districts, which we discussed at the workshop, and we cannot exclude any sitting board members. If you watch the county's presentation on the twelfth, where their recommendation was adopted, they echo the same criteria. We have a very, um, aggressive timeline for this, because we would have expected to have the census data eight months ago, six to eight months ago. We got it, a summary redistricting file in early August, and we've been working on this in earnest since then. Since we last talked, two weeks ago, we had expected to get the rest of the census data at the beginning of, you know, December, now it's looking more like twenty-twenty-two. So we have the data that we need for redistricting, which is total population and major demographic groups. Again, total population is your guiding criteria. We do not have some of the requests that we got from citizens through this two-week period, because it's just not released by the census yet. So social economic status, commuting times, information that goes deeper into the demographics and the socioeconomic of Alachua County is just not available, and it's not required for this process. This is total population. So, this is the timeline, we had the board workshop on October sixth, we're back here for the first reading, we have a, uh, November sixteenth public hearing, and then a mid-December, I think we're starting to hone in on a date for that, I'm not going to put a date out there right now, but it's looking like first or second week of December, to meet all of the processes and timelines that we need to meet. You saw this slide in the last workshop, this is just a review of the population, um, the darker red areas indicate greater, uh, populations in your census blocks throughout the county. Just giving you an overview of what the municipal boundaries look like, again, this was presented in October, uh, October sixth workshop, and then an idea of what the current districts for the school board look like. So one of the crests, requests we had was, we had shown the disparity in the twenty-twenty population between the districts, we're looking at, you know, two districts that are twenty thousand people greater than the other districts, and we have to fix that in twenty-twenty. In twenty-ten, the request we got, um, we, we received a request to show you what those look like in twenty-ten, so you can see the gra, uh, the table on top, how the population has changed in each of the districts. You can see the tremendous growth, I think we've all experienced it through traffic, um, through seeing developments come up, that seeing the impacts on our infrastructure, we're all aware of this growth, we know where it's going on, uh, we can look at the building permits, we know where pe, homes are being built, we know where people are moving to. And so, the, this hasn't, as we covered in the workshop, this hasn't, redistricting hasn't happened in Alachua County for twenty years, and you can see the results of it here, with such a tremendous disparity between populations in the districts. This is the number one goal to fix this calendar year. Specifically, again, we're going to create compact and contiguous districts, we don't want to have districts spreading long, over long areas, we can't have multiple polygons of districts, they need to be compact and contiguous, we need to have a total population balance, we cannot exclude any of the current board members. So we know your addresses, and we're looking where you live compared to your districts, we cannot draw you out of those districts. Going to option one that we talked about, October fifth, you can see the, the shift between districts one and four, the expansion of District Two, you can see one really coming back, you know, the original boundaries of one, you can see the black line that goes from Archer all the way over to Hawthorne, and we've essentially cut that in half while keeping the populations relatively approximately equal. You can see, uh, that this is probably the option that is closest to the current board zones, with a center of Gainesville with District Two, and then the surrounding districts in some of the sub, more suburban areas and the rural areas. Option two, we talked about, is a lot more similar to the counties, where you have the diversity of the rural and the urban areas. So when I say diversity, I'm not just talking about race or ethnicity, I'm talking about rural and urban voters, so people living in the city of Gainesville, people living outside of the city of Gainesville, and these are more akin to, like I said in the workshop, spokes on a bicycle. Um, the county, again, had an excellent discussion about this, as, as the population of the county is shifting west, that sort of middle spoke also shifts west. Um, so you can see the changes in this, where, you know, District Three and Two shift, District One expands east into the city of Gainesville, um, whereas before it stopped, uh, at Tower Road. And this is, again, more similar to the county's option. These are just two options side by side, so you can see really the differences in how these districts are drawn. I have the average variance shown, um, the county's variance is a little bit closer to one, the state's goal is a ten percent variance, so we're well within the state's goal, um, I would say that our variance is higher from the counties due to your addresses. There's, we have to preserve these districts with your addresses, and there's some areas that we had to make some decisions sticking to major roads to make it easier for the voters, not jumping in and splitting neighborhoods, and so, we have a little bit higher variance, but it's well within the threshold of what the state requires at ten percent. Again, I covered this, um, you know, talking about each, you know, a pro for each option, um, they both have a variance within the acceptable criteria, I think option one's a little bit more compact and familiar currently to voters, I think option two would make more sense down the road, using, um, the more major roads, um, running out into the rural areas, coming into Gainesville, just, they're a little bit cleaner boundaries. Option one expands District Two in Gainesville, um, option two expands District Two outside into the, um, northeastern portion of the county. When I say that option two has more diverse voting districts, I'm not, again, speaking on race or ethnicity, I'm talking about people living in the city of Gainesville and outside of the city of Gainesville, I'll show you some figures on that in a little bit, um, but there are some disadvantages, you know, I think option one is a little bit less flexible with growth, where we know growth is coming, um, and that you could see a, if you could see more growth in certain districts in option one, that would be more out of whack, um, down the road sooner than option two. Option one also splits municipal boundaries in some areas, uh, we try to keep the, especially the cities outside of Gainesville, we're trying to honor municipal boundaries, not split those cities, I think we have to with the population of Gainesville, have some splits within the city of Gainesville, but Hawthorne, Archer, Micconopee, we're trying to make sure that each of those cities stays in one district and is not split. I think, you know, probably the biggest disadvantage for option two is it's a significant shift for everybody, um, but it is closer to the county's option. And I want to talk about the county presentation a little more, um, it was accepted and, um, approved by the Board of County Commissioners, and option two, as you are looking at, is close to it, but again, we have to use your addresses for these districts. So we cannot match the county's proposed recommendation at this point. It would exclude one, if not two, people, um, sitting board members, and force two board members into one district, two sitting board members, which we cannot do, so, you know, at this time, um, the county, really, my recommendation to you as a board is we cannot move forward with what the county is doing, but we have provided you an option which is similar to the county, which could move you down the road closer to adopting the county boundaries. Another request we had was for single-vote redistricting, um, and so, you know, we had a re, there was a recent discussion from the October fifth board meeting, I believe, um, and I provided this background slide, you know, two-thirds of Florida's public school districts are completely at-large, um, the latest has been Manatee County, which required a voter referendum to convert to a single-voter district. They also have stricter criteria for boundaries and for voter representation, particularly for race and ethnicity. And so, we had a request, um, from the, from the board at the last workshop, to come with a proposed single-voter district. Um, now, I'm going to caution everybody here, citizens and board, this is not a final draft, this was working magic for you in about a week, um, a week's time to have this ready, it's not final, we still have, uh, a lot of things that would still need to be worked on, the population, as you can see, is, is approximately equal as we can, but it would still would probably need to be even better to go to single-voter districts. Again, the, the, the boundaries become a lot, a lot less simple, too, where you have areas where you're going in and taking in different neighborhoods to, um- And so we had a request from the, from the board at the last workshop to come with a proposed single voter district. Now, I'm going to caution everybody here, citizens and board, this is not a final draft. This was working magic for you in about a week, a week's time to have this ready. It's not final. We still have a lot of things that would still need to be worked on. The population, as you can see, is as approximately equal as we can, but it still would probably need to be even better to go to single voter districts. Again, the, the boundaries become a lot, a lot less simple too, where you have areas where you're going in and taking in different neighborhoods to, to, you're not splitting neighborhoods, but you're not following major roads. We're not following rivers, you know, some of these boundaries that make sense to people. Again, this will require a voter referendum. So this is not something you can get done this calendar year. And that is another requirement that you have to have the redistricting done during an odd number of years so it doesn't affect your elections. And you have four seats coming up. So, you know, this is not something that could realistically be done this calendar year to get to a voter referendum. We brought this to you so you could see it. And, you know, we've looked at a lot of the different demographics that we have access to right now. And so going through the options, again, total population is the legal guiding criteria for option one and option two. When we talk single voter, we have to get a lot more balanced with racial and ethnic representation. And we're not there in the option that I've showed you. You can see we're closer than any other option. But we're not there in terms of the legal requirements for a single voter district. So not having the data ready, not being able to get this to voter referendum this year are two major strikes against me recommending you go this option. I also provided a summary of the 2010 and 2020 census data with the current district. So you can see district four, over 40% African American. Whatever we choose, it's going to be a better option than what we have right now. And so I want to make a recommendation to you all to, you know, completely remove consideration of the county option because it doesn't work for the school board at this point. Remove consideration of the single voter option during this calendar year. If that's something that you wish to discuss starting next year, starting the year after that, you know, there are requirements that we're going to have to meet for timelines then. But I'm recommending to you as your consultant to the board to not pursue this option or the county option because they're just not viable right now for different reasons. I'm asking you to make a motion for preferred option one or two tonight so we can begin to receive additional input from staff, or from citizens and from you all to really have a basis to move forward for the November 16th second reading and then adoption in mid-December. And so that concludes my presentation today. These are my recommendations to you all as your consultant to move forward with either option one or two tonight. And I'm like to finish and open up for questions now. Madam Chair.
Well, we, I was gonna let our citizen who had asked to speak and then we will have discussion. All right, Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Rodney Long and I'm happy to see that the county is in the process of going through and redrawn the district boundaries. I had the opportunity to do this several times while serving on the Gainesville City Commission and the Alachua County Commission. As many of you probably know, I was the first elected single member district commissioner in 1988. And in Gainesville, we've been very successful in having people of color elected to the Gainesville City Commission as well as this board. If you were to go to the single member voter option here, I will be concerned about that even though district four now has about 40% of the people now in that particular district now. People of color live all across Alachua County. And I'll be concerned of whether or not you would have a minority access district that would ensure at least one African American would be elected to this board. We've had a person of color on this board for quite some time. You've had three members on this board that were elected at large. So I would concur with the recommendation from the consultant that you remove that option for further consideration. But I do have a question maybe to the attorney of the consultant regarding the process of placing this on the ballot. Alachua County is a charter county, as we all know. Does this board place that before the voters? Or do you request the Board of County Commission to place it on the ballot if you consider this in 20 whatever year out? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Either attorney.
I think the process is that the board would vote and if it did, it would request, and I think the county is mandated to take on that sort of ministerial act of putting it on the ballot. We're not in charge of drawing up the ballot, but we would provide the content of what the board voted on. I think the county would then be required to have it on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, Madam Chair. The, the other issue is, as you know, every 10 years we go through this process and the statute requires, one, the public hearings. It also requires, once you've had the maps, you do the public hearing to let the public know what you're doing that right now. And once it's completed, there's a certified copy of the resolution and the maps that are sent to be recorded in the public record, then they're sent to the supervisor of elections office. And that's normally the process of how this works. This did not happen in 2010. There is no public record that I found, I've researched, that has, one, a resolution adopted by this board with a map of the precincts. Did you find one in your record? Because we've been looking for it and I haven't been able to find it. We do have one from 2001 that was adopted by the board. And that's normally where you start from, from the last one, but you are qualifying people under 2012. So can you reference that?
Madam Chair, that is, that is correct. This did not occur in 2010. The last time the school board performed redistricting was 2000, so 2001. With, with the 2000 census data.
Right. But by Florida statute, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, you're supposed to adopt by resolution the map that currently right now you all, that have been running since 2012. You've been running on a map that was never approved by this board. It was never adopted by resolution. Copies were never sent to the courthouse. A certified copy was never sent to the supervisor of elections. How are you all qualified running for office if it was never adopted by state statute? So you're starting right now using 2010 census data for maps you never approved. How could you do that? So explain that to me because state statute is pretty clear with this process.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to be clear that the, the data was a request for 2010 just to see what the changes were. The data that we're using for redistricting is actually from 2020, the summary files. Is that, is that, answer your question?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, let me get, let me, let me hear it again then.
I can hear you.
I am clear about what data you are using to adopt this map. You're doing the correct process right now.
We're beyond two minutes.
Okay.
You're doing the correct process right now that should have been done in 2010 and approved in 2011 for the 2012 elections. You're doing it now, but you're only using the data from 2010, the population data, the census data to start you now going forward. But you never approved a map by resolution. There was never, it was never filed in the court. It was never a certified copy given to Pam Coprenter, who was the supervisor of elections at that time, that would make sure that all of you know what districts you were legally in.
Thank you so much. Now it's time for our discussion.
And Madam Chair, if I may, prior to your discussion, just to clarify a couple of things. The, the November 16th date that we're asking for is actually for a public hearing. And the second reading would be December 7th is the date that would fall within all of our timelines. And we are specifically asking the board, the board can, to vote and, and decide on one of the maps so that we can, Mr. Gilrith can have time to develop the legal descriptions that need to be part of the map that we are going to be presenting at the public hearing on November 16th as well as to allow us to work up the resolution.
Attorney, attorney, we don't need to decide on an option this evening?
You don't have to. That is correct.
Thank you.
It would be, we're, we are requesting.
I heard you correctly. Thank you so much. Okay. Mr., Dr. Paulson had a question. Ms., Mrs. Surtin.
Well, if I heard correct, I think that staff is, our consultants asking for us to make, to decide on as a.
Right. I know he did, but did you hear what attorney, attorney just said? All right, Dr. Simon, wait a minute. Dr. Simon.
We would appreciate the board to select an option.
Okay.
Because that will help us with all of the process because we are like, which has been mentioned, we're running out of time.
All right.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we discuss, move that we adopt the option, map on the option two. That's been presented by Mr. Gilrith.
All right.
I'll, I'll second.
We'll have other discussion before you make a motion.
We have discussion now.
All right. Then may I let Mr. Hyatt have his say? Okay.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I think I'm, rather than just discussion, I, I would like to ask a couple of questions. And, and just, I think there are two different issues here. I think as far as single member districts, it's very clear by state statute that that has to be voted on by the people. So that's not happening for this, period. But I think whether or not to present a, that choice to the voters, that's a different question. And we're, and we're not really discussing that today. But I, so I, you know, looking at the, the maps that we saw during the workshop and also tonight, the public got, also saw them again today. I would agree with Ms. Surtin that I, I think it's best now to look at two and I think the, the flexibility in future years of, of, as the county is planning to do, just sort of edge that center to the west would, would make things a little clearer. I, I think that as far as single member districts, that's something that should be looked at. There are people on, in the district, in, in the, excuse me, in the county that, that feel like they're, they're really hard to be heard. And I, and I think, and I'm not convinced that that's the right way to go at all. I just think it, we shouldn't dismiss it out of hand. And I, and I certainly would, would agree with Commissioner Long that any limitation of minority access, to me, that's a non-starter. Can't happen, won't happen, and period. So when that, if that is looked at, that has to be right on the first paragraph of the discussion. So, and, and let me also clarify if I could, and I, and I think you've said it, but I want to make sure I have it right, that future boards during odd numbered years can revisit this and, and make proposals. So if a future board thought, okay, this, we're already, maybe not wait for 10 years, but if, if it's already, we, we see it, it's, it's not working, then they could do that. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that is, that is correct. You could do this at any point during the tenure process. It's highly encouraged to do it after the tenure census results.
Right.
That's when you have the most current data. You could do it at any odd number of years through the next.
And so if a decision was made to have single member districts, that would be a reason to obviously, because of the stricter requirements, that would be a reason to go ahead and do it prior to the next census.
Madam Chair, I'd agree with that.
Okay. You know, thank you very much and I appreciate the report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Surtin, you were absolutely correct. We do already have the motion in. So go on and make your comment.
Dr. Paulson was.
Dr. Paulson.
Maybe I had misheard. I thought, I thought you were favoring one.
Turn your mic on.
District one. Did I hear, mishear? Did I hear it wrong?
I'm not sure.
I thought you thought district.
Madam Chair, I still can't.
Yeah. I thought you thought district two, you, you weren't in favor of district two.
I'm in favor.
Option two, excuse me. I understand. Thank you.
I'm not here to tell you.
No, but I just thought I heard you say that.
I, I'm presenting to you an option that's similar to what you have now and an option that's similar to the county.
Which one's similar to the county?
Option two.
Okay, and then you.
The county adopted their recommended redistricting on October 12th.
Right. I, I thought you, well, maybe I misheard. I thought you thought that was, you, it sounded like you were favoring one, that's all. I, I misheard it.
Thank you, Dr. Paulson, Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my comments, I missed this workshop last week, but I did watch the video of it. And I met with Mr. Gilrith and I favor option two because it does look more like the, we're moving towards the map that looks like the county commission. And I think that would clear up some confusion that arose back in June. I favor at-large districts. I think that has worked for the preponderance of the, the years that we've been here and all of us were elected up under at-large districts. I think it increases representation and it increases voter participation under the at-large. We're not considering it a change right now, but I'm just going to make my comments in that I, I think at-large serves our county and the school district better in the sense that every citizen in Alachua County gets to vote for all five of us. If we move to a single member district, you only get to vote for one person and that's based on where you live. So these districts, redrawing this and addressing this now is critical because there's been a lot of growth in the county since 2000. I would have liked to have seen what the population was by district in the 2000 maps. I don't know if you could get that to us. It's, we won't have it there, but I'd like to. So we could see how, how far that, how far we're out of whack. But I don't even think it was, this, this just came to our knowledge. I knew that, I've heard of the county commission doing it in, in 10, you know, every 10 years that's related to the census in the city. And I just improperly just assumed that the county or someone else did it for the school board because I had never heard of, heard of it being done by us, by this body here. But nevertheless, we're here now. And I do favor option two, as I said, I'm in the motion. But, and the reason being is, like I said, I like the slices in the sense that if, if it's familiar to the county, but we have, each member would represent an area of our county that is in the city limits as well as extending out into the rural areas. And I think having the at-large system, our school district is looked at as a whole for the county when we do a lot of the reports for building new schools and looking at things, they're looking at us on, for a countywide. It's not on a per-district type thing and metric rather. And I think if we need to elect our members like that, because if you're electing a person, they're thinking, oh, I'm, I'm only concerned about what's happening to the schools in this particular area when we can't consider and make decisions like that. We have to consider all the schools and all the children that, that, that are in schools all over the county. And because we don't really want to have where there's one area that's super, super resourced and one that's not resourced well. So thank you, Mr. Gilrith, for your work and thanks for the, the time that you spent with me last week. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Ms. Surtin. Mr. Gilrith, I'm from an area where we have a portion of the board, of the school board being single member and a portion being at-large. But I notice the people who are from my area of the town where I was from, it's very difficult with funding, getting the necessary resources. And she was in West Orlando, Washington Shores area. That is a single member district area. And very difficult getting things moved because of that. And I would hate to see us go in that direction here in Alachua County. I see several lights. Is that your light, because it still has Mrs.? Okay, I'm so sorry. Ms. Russell?
I tend to favor option two as well because it just looks more balanced than the other option. It, it just seems like it would work better. It, it just seems like it would work better for the county.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hyatt?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to say that I, I, I think Ms. Surtin makes some very valid points, as, as well as you did, Madam Chair. What I'm, what I would be interested in, uh, certainly before seriously considering uh, whether or not to change or to offer referendum, uh, would be, uh, to talk to our colleagues and talk to citizens in, in districts where, uh, there, there are single-member districts. And I, and I think, uh, Dr. McNally pointed out, uh, something that could very well be problematic with that. Uh, but, um, you know, I, this is a little off the subject tonight, but I, I think when we're talking about this, but, but it was mentioned, the single member, so I, I don't, I wouldn't like it to be dismissed out of hand, but I would like, uh, to get some data, uh, and certainly from minority communities, and certainly from folks that, um, are, um, that, that experience this. Does this, does this help with other, uh, representation? Or it, does it, uh, squash it? Uh, and so, or quash it, I should say. So, so, uh, I, I would not in any way be opposed at getting more information, uh, to see, you know, I think we all have an initial reaction as to, this is good, this is bad. Let's talk to some folks, and I, obviously, Dr. McNally, you already have, uh, that, that are in that situation, and, and see if we can get a little more information as, as we go forward. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just respond to that? Just that, I want to make, be very clear, yeah.
Just a minute, I still see your light on. Did, did you have some? No, Mrs. Russell? Okay, all right, Mr. Gilrith?
I just, I want to be clear that, that, that we're not dismissing any of the options out of hand. It's, it's really looking at the timeline right now and saying that this is just not a valid, single voter would not be valid for this timeline to have it done, redistricted by December. So we're not dismissing it out of hand. We've looked at it. We're, I'm recommending, as your consultant, you can't do it right now with the timeline.
Madam Chair, if I could respond. Um, Mr. Gilrith, I, if, if that was the implication, I apologize because it wasn't meant to be. It was, I'm saying, I was saying for me and everyone up here that has to make a decision, uh, I think it would help all of us if we get more information. Uh, I'm not convinced, uh, that it's a bad idea, but I'm not convinced that it's a good idea. I just would like to get more information. So, uh, thank you.
I feel the same way.
All right, with that, we are going to vote tonight. Um, and I'm going to ask that we do by roll. And so, let's start with Option One, and then if that fails, we'll go to the next option.
Madam Chair.
The motion is for-
Motion is for Option Two.
All right, the motion is for Option Two.
And we have a second.
Ms. Surtin?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Paulson?
All right.
Did, did you say, all right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes, um, five zero. Ms. Turner? Did you have anything else? If not, Ms. Wise?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, for the opportunity to come back before you with the, um, revisions to the job description for the Director of Grants Acquisition and Special Projects. I wanted to just explain the changes in hopes that I could get your approval this evening. In the qualifications, um, we have added administration, supervision, and educational leadership as a preference to number one, and then strike through having an educational certification because we're not necessarily looking for a teacher or a school-based administrator. Instead, we write as a qualification, experience in grants, development, research or proposal development, and technical curriculum writing preferred. We've also added in the performance responsibilities, especially in items one through six, those qualities that we're really looking for in someone who is going to be able to coordinate all of the grant applications, write, submit, um, monitor the implementation, collect the data, solicit input from stakeholders, and oversee a budget of these grants in excess of $15 million. This job has really changed since last we hired for it, long time ago, when I was a principal at Kanapaha Middle School. And so we would like to cast a wider net and get someone who can help us with the important work of securing the grants that support supplementing our core curriculum, that support ESD and student services, somebody that can help us not just with the grants that have always been in this office, but in grants that have been, um, and are managed through other departments and offices, as well as some smaller grants that we compete for that let us have special programs, like the, the JFG program that puts, uh, graduation coaches in our high schools. And so I'm just asking again, um, and the Superintendent is recommending that you approve this job description as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Um, Surtin?
Sumo, Madam Chair.
Since I can't get a second, I'm going to do that second discussion.
I got a light.
Dr. Paulson?
Not the only one.
Dr. Paulson?
Yeah, I, didn't the previous person, wasn't he given charter schools too?
Um, that was one of his responsibilities that he shared with me, yes.
Yeah, okay, and then, was that going to be still there?
No, sir, we have someone who's doing all sorts of special choice programs in our department now.
Okay, well, it's, I, what about the salary of this? Is it the same salary?
It's not a change, it's not a change in pay grade.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because a lot of people are concerned with some of the salaries.
Right, so is this still a director position, which is what it's been for a very long time?
Who gets the charter school now?
I'm sorry.
It's been moved, charter schools have been moved some-
It's in the curriculum department.
Okay. I just, you know, I-
Yes, sir.
I looked into this, you know.
But this department is also in the curriculum department.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Paulson, Mr. Hyatt?
Um, yes, it, to, to be clear, we, we currently have a position that's available. We, we're just, the, the attempt here is to, uh, amend the qualifications.
And some of the job responsibilities to hopefully attract someone who has experience and expertise in the area of writing, securing, and administering grants.
Right.
Which isn't always a school-based person. It could be, but it isn't always.
Um, yeah, I, I think, um, I'm, let me, I, I think to comment on Dr. Paulson's question, my understanding from what's written is that this is a zero-cost change. Is that correct?
That is my understanding as well, and, um, the person who left this position had many, many years of experience, and I'm not sure we'll find someone who has those years of experience, so it may be a cost savings.
Well, I, you know, I, I hope that this is a sincere change. And what I'm being by sincere is that it really does mean preference. It doesn't mean we're just going to add this and then ignore it. Uh, I hope, I hope that's, um, the, the, you know, the, the way it's going to be approached. And I also hope there isn't a specific person in mind at this point. Uh, but, um, I, I will say that the, as far as grants, and Dr. McNally and I, quite a number of years ago, probably back, oh, I'd say a good 19 years ago, were involved in, in getting the, uh, grant from, um, uh, for the Fine Arts Party of Meduval. And, and we were beating our heads against the wall for about two years. And suddenly, when the grant writers, um, from the, from the district got involved, uh, that changed our lives. And, and so it really can make a difference. And, um, and I, I think that we, we were very fortunate for many years having, uh, Mr. Cottle. Uh, and I'm, I'm hoping that, um, that this is going to be a, um, a, a really solid move, uh, forward for the district. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And, um, before I ask for our citizens who have, um, written to speak on this item, I just want to say that I totally support, um, this work. Um, we cannot afford not to have an individual whose total responsibility is with the writing and the working and leading the team, um, for this effort. So, I just wanted to say that publicly-
Thank you.
-that, um, we, we, you know, sometimes when you, we're so good, Ms. Wise, um, I see Ms. Jones, I see Ms. Dorella, sometimes we ask people to do double duty. And for this particular thing, um, item, we certainly need that individual. So I'm hoping that we can do that and be concise and move our district even further. Um, citizen-
I appreciate that. I would just like to say that on top of the things that you probably normally think about, Title One, Title Two, Three, Four, um, and beyond, the 21st Century Learning-
Yes.
Um, the Community Foundation, the Mental Health Allocation, the, the School Hardening Grants, all of those go through this office. And, and frankly, I was probably spoiled by, um, Mr. Cottle and how long and how he grew into that role and all of the many things that he did. But someone whose specialty is in, um, shepherding the grants of our district is really key to the work that we're trying to do.
Oh, I know. Dr. Rockwell?
Hi, I'm Dr. Sarah Rockwell. Um, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak on all three proposed job descriptions. Would you prefer I come back for the other two?
Well, we have you down for Item Five. Um, would you speak just for this particular one, and then the others, you can come back?
Okay. So, um, I support this change to the job description for the Grant Director because I have worked, uh, with professors at UF on applying for grants, and I know that it is an extremely intensive and specialized process. There are a lot of requirements involved in administering the grants and tracking all of the money. It's a lot of work, and it's very specialized work that is completely different from what we do as classroom teachers, which I also have experience with. I would not necessarily expect a teacher to be able to jump into a grants position. I wouldn't expect a grants expert to be able to jump in and teach. And so I wouldn't want to crisscross those credentials and requirements. I think that it's very important that our teachers who are qualified to teach and who have a passion for educating our children are encouraged to be in our classrooms. We already have a teaching shortage. And I think it makes sense to recruit someone whose specialization is in grant writing and administration specifically for this position. And I think that as a zero-sum change for a job description, this just makes logical sense. Thank you.
Dr. Kaplan? And Dr. Rockwell, please remind me with the, because I only have that one sheet. Okay, I can do that.
Good evening, thank you, Chair McNally, members of the board. My name is David Kaplan. Again, here, I'm a father of a, a CPS student, and I support all the positions, but definitely want to talk about this Grants, uh, Director of Grants position. And when I'm not at school board meetings, I'm a professor whose research program is supported entirely by grant funding, state grants, federal grants, foundation grants. So I know personally how important it is, as we've just been hearing, how, how to have a talented grant staff on your team is critical. So I think the board should look at this opportunity and see the position for what it is. It's a very much a value-added prospect. It's an investment that is the potential to pay, more than pay for itself in tens of millions of dollars of state and federal grants. As Ms. Wise, uh, mentioned, $15 million in federal grants. I, I just recently received a federal grant, $2.3 million. I would not have gotten it without the budget expertise, filling out the forms, doing the paperwork, doing the reporting. I can focus on the research, and my grant staff take care of the grant administration. And I think having that kind of position in, at ACPS and in the district is just going to basically more than pay for itself many times over. Adopting the position by the board, it's far-sighted, it's ambitious. It's an indicator that you all understand how the best school districts are attracting and retaining the funding. So I just strongly, strongly urge you to vote in support of, uh, the adoption of the amendment on this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Surtin?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought my light was on beforehand, so thank you for acknowledging me. I was going to say during Board Member comment that, um, after the fifth meeting, I went and I looked at a couple of other districts and to see what was in their Grants Director, um, if they had a position, a similar position, and what the qualifications were. And I looked at Polk County because, um, they do have a lot of grants. I've spoken with a Board Member there about how they pay for some of their things that we pay for with our mill, and she said it's through grants. And that their grant, their Director of Grants and Acquisitions does not have a teaching certificate. It leans heavily on, um, a person that has some background knowledge in education, but it's heavily on the financial portion and writing and knowing how to respond to, to grants. The same with Broward County. And I also looked at Sarasota County. Um, theirs does not require that, those are the only, the three that I looked at were for here. So, I, um, and, and I was encouraged to see it back on the agenda this week because this is not a new position. I actually even went and looked, and I saw that the pay grade was the same as what it was, um, when the, the, the form, the position that's being revised here, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, well, Mr. Hyatt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, say I do support the position and intend to vote for it. I, I, um, do, do want to say also that, as I pointed out earlier, this is not, if, if you're not against this, if you vote no, because it's, it's a matter of changing what, what the requirements are. I, I think Dr. Rockwell's point was, is well-taken that, uh, as far as just specialty and, and that experience, uh, is, is probably the best way to go. And, and also, I, I would agree that it is a, a value-added position. But, you know, again, if you vote no, doesn't mean that you're against having this position filled. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this point? No other discuss, uh, Mr. Delaney?
I was just going to say, we've had the motion in the second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh. And now, um, Item Number Six, Ms. Johnson?
Madam Chair, Board Members, um, like Ms. Wise, I want to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to bring these positions back before you, um, and share with you a little bit more information about why we are bringing these before you. For the Coordinator School Volunteer Business Partnership Program, it's been, um, quite a few years since we made any substantive changes to this particular position. And in that time, the scope of the position has increased enormously. Simply the, the sheer volume of volunteers that we are working with, approximately 21,000 volunteers every year running through this office, uh, who work about 600, who contribute about 610,000 hours to our school system. Again, that's one year. Uh, the number of business partnerships we have, more than 300 business partnerships that are coordinated by this position, uh, that bring in about 10.2.9 million dollars annually in, um, contributions, both financial and in-kind contributions. Uh, the huge number of programs that, uh, this person has to coordinate and, uh, work with local community organizations to coordinate that involve either the bringing in of resources, finding resources for schools and district programs, or finding volunteers, either at the school level or for these district-wide programs. And I, it would take me all night to go through a list of some of those programs, but they- include things like foster grandparents, big brothers and big sisters, chess challenge, rotary reading safari, teen trendsetters, the winter break food baskets, school supply drives, book giveaways, establishing many new programs as needed. And COVID has certainly provided an opportunity for this person to create opportunities and provide assistance to students and families and teachers. For example, during the 2020 pandemic, when we abruptly had to end school, this person went out and worked with local restaurants to provide meals for students because at that time, our Food and Nutrition Services was not able to do that legally. This person made a lot of the, found a lot of the donations that made it possible for us to have our pandemic graduation ceremonies. This person kicked into gear a, an online volunteering program so that students who needed help during the pandemic were able to get it online through volunteers. And this position oversaw that. There are many working, this person is now working with UF leadership to develop new volunteer opportunities for UF students in addition to the many that we already have in existence. They supervise our Mentor GNV program, many other programs in collaboration with groups in the community. This person works closely with the foundation and other groups on special events, Teacher of the Year, School Related Employee of the Year, ought to be a kid again, our fifth grade field trip, finds a lot of volunteers and resources for school-based programs, career fairs, science fair judges, robotics volunteers, teacher and staff appreciation, attendance initiatives, PBS program initiatives, has spearheaded the employee giveaway that was so successful in the spring. And in fact, it was so successful that we have continued it this year and are conducting those giveaways every month. So just the sheer volume of things that this person is expected to do, the many new programs that have been established, the many new partnerships and collaborations with community organizations, with businesses, and also all of the requirements under the Jessica Lunsford Act. And when you're talking about 21,000 employees that we have to make sure are appropriate to be working in our schools and working with our students, that is an enormous undertaking. So that is the reason that we are presenting this particular job description to you tonight.
Okay. So move, Madam Chair. All right.
I couldn't hear you. You can't see my light, it's hard, it's just.
No, oh, you're giving me a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It has been promptly moved and seconded. We do have citizens who would like to speak, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Rockwell for item six.
I'm gonna wait for the language translator position.
All right. Dr. Kaplan, are you, are you gonna wait for that too? All right, thank you. All right, Carolyn Weber.
So this position particularly is, I feel extremely important. As someone who, I was a sales manager for a long time, communication to me is probably one of the most important things that you guys can do to make people happy. Jackie is fantastic, and everyone else who's in the Communication Department is also fantastic, but it's not enough still. You guys want community engagement, we want community engagement, the volunteers that you guys can get, I mean, if you can get out into the neighborhoods and get people, give people an outlet to come and volunteer and help these teachers that are desperately needing help in their classrooms, and, you know, just get out into the community, talk to people. I think you're gonna have much happier people here, you're gonna have happier teachers, you're gonna have happier kids, you're gonna have kids learning more. I know, Ms. Russell, you volunteered. I read that in your biography, or your CV. It's extremely important, and you guys just have a really hard time with communication because there's just not enough people to do it. And so I really feel like this is extremely important, and you should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Surtin?
I'm good, I'm Dr. McNeely, but I would like to say I appreciate the work that's being done in the department, and stood in your stead last week when they did the last employee giveaway. And I was longing for my name to be in that bucket because it had some good prizes.
Madam Chair, if there are any more questions about that position, I still wanted to speak about the second position.
Right, we still have comments coming. Mrs. Russell?
Yes, I may have missed this, but who is taking care of those responsibilities that you mentioned right now? Who's doing those?
This would be a change in the job description for the person who currently fills that position, that is Kelly Costomo.
Okay, thank you.
And before we go to the second part, Mrs. Johnson, I just want to say that if it were not for the previous person that we had in the team, it is no way that we would get all of the accolades that we get in from this district because of the work that those individuals had to do, or that individual had to do. I see this as a necessity. I implore this board to realize that because we cannot put it on our staff. We need a prescribed person who can handle this and push us even further in the limelight positively throughout our county, throughout this state, throughout the nation. That's what I need to say. All right, so you, I know you need to go into the next section, language translator.
And?
All right, oh, I'm so sorry, Dr.
No, I just was gonna back, Ms. Russell said what I was gonna say. I just wanted to know that it was the same person, that's all.
Yes.
You said it, so thank you.
Okay, all right.
And Madam Chair, because they're two different positions, I would recommend that the board vote on them one at a time.
Okay, I was gonna do that. All right, thank you. Mrs., well, we have a motion. So, Mrs. Surtin?
Aye.
Dr. Paulson?
Aye.
Mr. Hyatt?
Aye.
I couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Talking like a pirate, but.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Madam Chair, the next position we are moving on to is a new PT job description for a specialist language translator, interpreter. This, currently, we just hired someone who is working mainly in the mornings as an OPS position, and we have already put this person to work translating many of the messages and documents that we send out to our families. This person has already been able to help families who have come into the district office and had questions about, for example, zoning. But this person is only available to work in the mornings. It's an OPS position, so there are a limited number of hours, and this person is only available for those limited number of hours, and not for all of the time that we would like to have such a person in place. And so to give you an example, I believe it was either Thursday or Friday afternoon, I received a phone call late in the afternoon about a student who had been experiencing, had been talking about suicide. The student was from a Spanish-speaking family, and the Spanish, the parents had no English language abilities. And unfortunately, our OPS person was in class and was not able to be there. So there was a lot of scrambling that afternoon to find somebody who could share this information with the parents and discuss with them what was the best thing to do for this student. Fortunately, that comes up very rarely, that kind of serious situation, but we have many circumstances, situations in which parents call our office or come into our office and need services, and it's difficult for us to provide those services because we don't have somebody dedicated in the district office to helping out those families. Another thing to keep in mind is that there are many programs, many federal grants, for example, that require that you provide translations, and a very good example is ESER. It is written into the ESER language that we have to provide translations for families that need it in this position. Now, again, I do want to stress, as we stressed last time, that all you are approving right now is a job description. We don't anticipate somebody full, hiring somebody full-time for this position until the next fiscal year. So all you are approving right now is a job description, not actually hiring somebody for this position.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
We have, it's been properly moved and seconded. We are gonna start with our citizens, and then we'll have a discussion. Now, Dr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Chair McNeely, board members, Superintendent Simon. Again, I'm Sarah Rockwell. I am here on behalf of a friend who couldn't be at this meeting, who wanted me to share a story about why it is so important for us to have a full-time interpreter on staff. My friend works as an IEP advocate. She attended an IEP meeting that ended up having to be postponed because an elementary school student was asked to come in to translate for his own IEP meeting. That should never happen. It doesn't meet federal requirements, as Ms. Johnson pointed out, a lot of, there are a lot of grants and other federal laws that require that we have translators available. And Spanish is the second most common language in this county. Our census data is showing that our Spanish-speaking population is growing. So I think it's really important that we have someone available to answer a critical call about a suicide, to attend an afternoon IEP meeting. And also that we still have contracted translation services for people who speak other languages who need them at their IEP meetings. But I think moving forward, we should really approve this job description and looking at filling this as a full-time position because we should never be asking an elementary school student to translate for something as important as an IEP meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Kaplan, and then, okay, thank you. Okay. Did you have for another? All right, thank you. So we can now have a discussion from the board.
I got it.
Ms. Surtin, and then Mrs. Russell.
Go ahead, Dr. Paulson.
I, um.
Touch your light, Ms. Dr. Paulson.
It's right there.
Okay.
Can you fit?
I guess it's out. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Paulson.
I just went on and off.
Well, so.
Yeah, I talked to some people in the district, and they weren't real enthusiastic about having this position, people that were in this, in this district for a long time. It's, and if we're gonna not use it for a year, next fiscal year, I don't know why we're approving it now. I don't know why we're approving it now.
So we would have the job description in place by the end of the year so we could look at hiring?
Well, that's what I'd rather look at at the end of the year. I want to see what goes on with the budget. I'm really concerned about our budget with the hiring.
I hear what you're saying, but again, all we're doing is approving a job description to put somebody.
Right, right. But I don't know, we'll see. But again, we've gotten by, and we are been able to be.
Well, we just started with our new person, and again, even so.
OPS, or you can make it maybe PT. Right?
I'm sorry?
Make it professional technical.
That, right now?
Instead of an administration, professional technical.
It would be, it would be a PT position.
Well, I see the A up there, that's why I looked.
Yeah, no, this would be a PT position. Yes, sir.
I just, I'm a little leery about it. And I did a lot of research, honest. I just didn't come in here cold.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Russell, and then Dr. Simon.
I have two questions. Would this salary be from ESER funds then, if it's a requirement of the, that we have that? Someone mentioned that, ESER?
I.
Come to the mic.
Thank you, Chair McNeely, to answer that question. I mean, certainly could fit within the parameters of the grant. I think what, what we're all realizing with the needs is the needs are gonna extend beyond ESER.
For what?
For the interpreter position.
Mm-hmm.
Like those, the needs for the translation services aren't necessarily gonna go away in two years, so could it be funded out of ESER? Yes, I think a more permanent solution would be general funds, but again, that goes into the budgetary process and the budget building process, which the board will be engaged with as we move into spring of next year.
Okay. So we could then, if we approve this, approve a salary from the ESER funds?
Well, the positions in and of themselves aren't specific to funding sources in most cases. And if you look back at all the job descriptions the boards approved, there's no specific funding, funding sources indicated. Where the funding sources come into play is through the budget building process. And again, we haven't really started that for next year, but we will. And of course, you know, if the board approves this, we'll be incorporating this position in that process.
Okay. And my other question is, could we hire another part-time OPS person for the afternoon? And have someone on call for either morning or afternoon whenever there was a need?
I will tell you, we put out a call for an OPS, for an OPS person for this particular position, and we actually put out the call through the University of Florida as well and other places. Fortunately, the candidate we had was a very good candidate because she was the only one willing to take this on as a part-time position. And that is only because she also happens to be a senior at UF and is actually studying, this is her major, this is what she's studying to do. But I had all of one applicant for a part-time position.
And how long ago was that?
I'm sorry?
When was that, that you put out the?
Oh, gosh goodness, we put that out probably two months ago, and kept waiting and waiting and waiting and hoping we were going to get more applicants. And we had one little nibble, and the person heard it was part-time and then was not interested.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Before, okay, Mrs. Surtin?
So I guess my comment and my, and my discussion to add to this interpreter position is, my understanding from Ms. Johnson is we have a part-time position that is on now that's filling a gap. But what is most important here, this is not like a wish list type job, like a fluff type job. This is a federal requirement. Like that job, that teach, that, that parent who had the elementary child who came in to interpret could actually probably sue us because we're not, we're not compliant, under federal compliance with grants. So for me, I mean, so if we get sued, the cost of this position, they've told us, 70,000, 729.16 with salary and benefits. So I'm sure a lawsuit will cost more than that. So we, let's, please, colleagues, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish with this. This is a requirement. We are pursuing, we have Title I on all of those grants, and I think if I'm not mistaken, we have a requirement to provide the interpretation for those parents in that, let alone ESER. ESER is soft money and will only have it for the three years, but after ESER leaves, this is still a requirement. And so we, in a part-time position like right now, we've all heard the news and the labor shortages and things that we have. People have their pick of jobs now, and so this young lady who we have now, I take it's a female, I just assumed that. She could have her pick of the litter of jobs because we're not the only agency in town that is hiring interpreters. And we have the hospitals because of the CMS rules, they have to have interpreters. We have court system, child protection, you know, Partnership for Strong Families. All of these agencies are, we're competing in that market. And so we want, if you want to attract employees and be able to retain people, we're gonna have to look at, for one thing, making sure we're in compliance with the grants and the funding sources, the things that we're getting. But then we have to make sure that we can hire people, and I don't think this is an exorbitant salary that they've tried to get someone to come on with this. And it may be that they do put, do something where it's two part-time positions, but you can't hire four job if we don't have a job description. I mean, I recall, I don't know if you all recall, a few, probably about a year or so ago, and before Brian Moore left, we eliminated a whole lot of job descriptions. I don't know if this is one of them that was eliminated then, but there were a whole lot, they said there were unused job descriptions, they were eliminated. And we also had a whole lot that we revised duties and titles and things on. I remember one in the IT section, and I just, I don't recall all of this question and all. And like you, Dr. Paulson, I am indeed concerned with the budget, but I don't think if this was not, would not be accommodated in our budget, I don't think Ms. Dorella would have advised this position to come forth. But again, as I say, this is a compliance-type position, similar to the internal auditor, so it's not like it was something we want to have. We want to make sure. We want to make sure that we're providing the services that we need to our students and their parents as required by law. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, one thing I would like to point out, it is that the person is not just translating verbally. We have this person also translating written messages, translating documents, translating COVID forms. So it, it is a, a skill set that is broader than just simply being able to speak the language. They have, also have to have the, the written skills as well.
I think inasmuch, thank you, Mrs. Surtin, for being so eloquent. I, I wish I could say all of that. But when I hear the word compliance and, and, and we are hesitating, it frightens me. I, I too think about budgeting, although we have some folk here on the dais who are very much more adept with the budget and all on my left side. Two people, as a matter of fact. But when we are out of compliance, it bothers me. I go back to our head start being out of compliance. And so look where we are with that. But inasmuch that we need folk, and we have students and, and people who are listening tonight, who have second, who may be of another language, I'm just wondering, what are they thinking? That they don't need the help when they come in to the school or IEP meetings or, as you said, zoning, wherever? We must have this position. And not only, we're just doing a job description. I heard you say to Ms. Russell two months ago, it'll probably, by the time you are ready to hire, hopefully, we will have one person to apply. Dr. Simon.
So thank you. I, I do, I, I want to make it clear that this is a job description. So we have it in our file. I am myself surprised that this job did not exist until maybe in the nearest future. And that would go along with the same issue with the auditor, that we didn't have a job description to draw on, even if we needed to fill this position. On top of that, we do have this OPS situation for the year. So as far as any budgetary need, again, we will not make any decisions until next year. So whatever budget we currently have right now, this position has absolutely nothing to do with it for this PT position. So we're talking about moving forward. So whether it's funded through ESER, whether it's funded through our general fund, those are discussions that we haven't even had yet because we aren't ready to have those discussions. Again, this is a person, we talk about compliance, that is certainly a serious concern, specifically in special ed, that I have emphasized repeatedly to the board. But it is, this is a skilled individual who is not only going to have to read and translate and listen and translate, but they also need to help explain and interpret. So the individuals are getting the most out of this experience. This is not a person that is easy to find. This is a very challenging type of position to find, specifically in a smaller community. I think it's paramount that we consider these things because this is how we serve our students best, our families best, and our community.
Thank you. Dr. Paulson.
Are we gonna contract out for all the other languages like we've been doing?
We're exploring other options. There is a technology-based option that I was made aware of a couple of days ago that in a pinch, you can.
Well, and we have places use.
All on them. But that would be one of the responsibilities, if you look at the job description, that would be one of the responsibilities of this person is to find other ways to serve those who speak.
And it's already in service some places in our district.
Correct, correct. So they, they would be exploring that.
What's the next largest language? Do we know?
It's Chinese and our Spanish language. I believe we have like seven, I mean, or I don't, I can get the numbers, but our Spanish speakers are vastly a larger population than Chinese.
Well, we can go ahead and, because people are, I was wondering, people are using these programs and they're using it in our, places in our district already.
I, I know from, from my purposes, I've been cobbling together from secretaries, from HR and.
No, but I also know, that's, I'm just making sure we're still doing that.
Right.
Because we, you know, we have about thirty languages or more, from what I understand.
We are, I'm sorry?
We have thirty to forty languages in our district.
Yeah, uh, in fact, I think it's more than that. We actually have that up on our website somewhere.
Behind tons.
It's, it's a huge number, yeah.
You know, and I, I mean, believe it or not, my family's bilingual, but not, when my cousins from over in Europe write, my computer translates for me. You know what I mean?
Right, and we've had that, you know, folks have, we, we've, in a pinch, used Google Translate for documents. And it's a terrible, it is, we've had people call and complain how bad that transl, that translation.
It's good for me.
Yes. We've, we've gotten complaints about the use of Google Translate for documents.
Okay. Thank you so much for the discussion. Let's have our vote.
Aye.
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 Even though I only heard of this two weeks ago and have thought of it, I will vote aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could comment that this is what happens when Rose Ramos retires.
Yeah.
Because she was the go-to translator for the entire building. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay.
But Jenny studied.
All right. We are gonna move now to our second citizen input. And Mr. Grande, welcome home.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to appreciate you joining the atmosphere a lot more better, seeing you all get along more collegially tonight. Appreciate the, appreciate that. Also, just wanted to point out, good to see Dr. Simon, as always. In this time, I want to say something. For those of us that wore the uniform, yesterday we lost a hero. We lost Colin Powell. And for some of you, it may be a big thing, it may not be a big thing. Some of you may feel a certain type of way. Some of you may feel like, well, he, uh, he let us down because of his testimony before the United Nations. But if, one, one thing you must remember is he was a human being. And we're all hu, human beings. We're all fallible. All of us are. We have our faults. And none of us, and, and, and when that time comes, we're all gonna go home one day. But while we're here, we need to do our best. And I think all of you up there try to do your best every day. And you come here and you make decisions for the best interests of the children that we're charged to serve. And I appreciate hearing comments from like Dr. Rockwell and others and Carolyn, people that I, I appreciate it. Dr. McNeely, I want to tell you how proud I am of our superintendent, Dr. McNeely. I want to tell you that we are blessed to have somebody that is compassionate and intelligent, an intelligent woman. And if for us, for as much as people harangue, it's easy to harangue a leader. Colin Powell was harangued. And I'm not comparing Dr. Simon to Colin Powell. I'm simply saying she's fallible. She makes mistakes. She never said she was perfect. But next time that you think you're perfect, remember, mistakes can come see you too. And I just want us to all remember to try to do our best in spite of your ideology. You're up there not to serve what your ideology is. You're there to serve the children. I asked, Doc, Chair McNeely, I asked Dr. Simon one time. I said, why are we not pushing back at this narrative of that CRT is not taught?
Dr. McNeely, we're at two minutes.
Hmm? Oh, I was, I'm sorry, thank you. I was like, who was that?
Thank you. All right, thank you. At this point, we'd like to take any rec, suggestions from our board or request, if any.
I got it.
Dr. Paulson, you have your light on.
Last meeting.
Oh, wait, wait, Dr. Paulson, I am so sorry. Oh, oh my gosh. I have to stop. Let's go to our citizens. You were supposed to remind me. Okay, all right, let's hear them.
Waiting on caller.
Hello?
Oh, you have two minutes with the board.
Okay, um, yes, my name is Tina Days. And I just want to say, I don't understand what parent could say that there have not been any educational learning in, uh, Latchell County. That is not the truth. We have one of the best superintendents that we have ever had. And for a fact, I want to say, oh, my daughter has gained, made all five on her FSA. The FSA scores are out. She has gained since the last time that she had the FSA. That's one. The second is, she hasn't missed a day for COVID because we've been masked up. How many schools have been closed? How many teachers have died? How many bus drivers said they scared to work because of COVID? We don't hear that anymore. Why? Because she mandated masks. You can't have a learning environment if the schools are shut down. Look at the teachers in Miami-Dade. Fourteen teachers have died since school started. So if we had teachers that died, don't you think that would affect our kids' learning? So I don't understand, who can say that they have not been any learning that's going on during, during the school? She has made it possible because the COVID rates are going down. If that's not learning, I don't know what is. And for a fact, I want to say this. I'm so sick of calling about this mask. If the people don't care enough to send their ki, kids the mask, they don't care enough for none to spread COVID. So they don't care enough to spread COVID. They're not going to care about other people's kids. We need to accept that fact. And the last thing I'm gonna say, for the parents that want to opt out of masks, well, you need to opt in for the vaccine. Thank you very much.
Caller, you got two minutes with the board. Go ahead.
Hi. First of all, I want to say, Dr. Simon, you're awesome. Keep doing what you're doing. You're, you're, you're doing awesome. Second, I want to say is, uh, some people up on the board, you need to respect your coworkers more. You need to, you, you need to respect the people that you say, oh, we get a long time. You're not. You're sitting up there, you wouldn't talk to your mother like that. You wouldn't talk, you wouldn't want nobody talking to your mother or your sister or your aunt like that. So why would you go talking to other people like that? I don't think that's right. And you need to check yourself because that looks like bullying. So this is why you need to, you need to be more professional. Kids are watching you. So you need to, you need to know that, hey, we want them to respect people. You need to respect people too. And I thank you. And y'all have an awesome night.
Caller, go ahead. You have two minutes with the board.
Good evening. I'm calling in quite a few of us online. We had a question about the mask. And many of us weren't even going to bring it up tonight, but we found it kind of ironic that the pastor who spoke earlier never wore a mask. Rodney Long, why did he get to speak without wearing a mask? So if certain people don't have to wear masks, could you extend that to maybe some of the board members sitting up there to not wear their mask? People are watching the hypocrisy. As far as the caller talking about getting along, would you speak to your father that way? Would you speak to your grandfather that way? Let's make sure we're addressing all of the people being snarky and with this side, snide remarks. I will say, the meeting has gotten better. And I'm the one who called in earlier about the learning. The FSA test in teaching was done under a previous superintendent, not the current superintendent. And when it comes to education, I'd like to see the numbers of how many students have been sent home for quarantine with no education, no online learning, just told, oh, the assignments are on canvas. Good luck with that. So yeah, where has been the education? I stand behind my comment. And I would like to thank Dr. Paulson for being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money and questioning every single expenditure, which is what every single one of you need to be doing up there. And again, let's not be hypocrites when it comes to masks because I get it, they're your political contributors and supporters. It's not going unnoticed by people in the county. I assure you of that. Good evening.
Madam Chair, that concludes the callers.
Thank you so much. We've had all of our citizens. We've had our board member and superintendent request. Oh, okay, all right. I got corrected on that. Let's sit back and listen. Dr. Paulson?
Yeah, um, last meeting I asked about Duval. The superintendent wrote us, I thought, I was wondering who was. Mic's not on. And I asked about Duval and what was happening there because we, nothing, we didn't know. You said there were four people you're working with. I asked specifically if you could get us the details of, of what's going on. Did I, is anybody in there? If they're in there, do they have liability insurance, et cetera, et cetera?
So may I respond, Board Chair?
I'm, I'm so sorry.
May I respond?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, so in my email, I outlined the, the organizations that we're collaborating with and I did share who they were.
Four, right?
There are four. We actually have four MOUs. And I don't remember a request to have the MOUs, but I am happy to have that shared with you.
Yeah, and that we're gonna, you know, they, sooner or later, we're gonna negotiate a contract. And are they, you know, things like liability, if they got.
Is the contract. The MOU has already been negotiated and it's a short term. And this is just a, um, this has been taken care of at this point.
Well, can you get the information to us?
I would be happy to share that with you.
And I still, is there liability insurance?
That is a requirement to rent every single one of our facilities. And we work with Mr. Jamison to make sure that we address all of the requirements for facilities.
All right.
So you would, so the board would like me to share the four board MOUs.
Right. And, uh, are we doing anything at Lofton too?
So that was also written in that email.
I missed that.
So in that email, we'll have all of this information. As far as the Lofton, I believe we are still in the process of finalizing that MOU, so it is not complete. But that is the discussion that I've shared with you all on a few occasions, including my vision presentation where I talked about the collaboration with Santa Fe College and the new innovative program that Dr. Brody is launching, where we have the two dual generational CTE-like option using the Lofton campus. But again, that MOU is still in the process, so we're not finalized. But as far as the Duval MOUs, I'm happy to share those with the board.
And finally, Aiquin Jones, is there a plan to move them?
So you're the second board member who's asked me about Aiquin Jones. And I have no idea what people have been talking about. I think this is one of the benefits of coming to the superintendent and talking to me because.
What I'm doing.
Well, we can talk in other meetings too. But, um, as far as what's happening with Aiquin Jones, I don't know what people have been sharing because I have nothing.
Some are talking about moving them over by, um, where the E-school is.
There have been thoughts and discussions, but there has been no movement on that at all.
Right. Right. And there's more, you know, like what's going on with the old Manning Building, too.
So that Manning Building, I believe I, I spoke with you all and I know the city has spoken with you all about this potential of having that available to the city to trade out a different bus location. And so this is something we've worked on. But as far as, again, it's similar to like the situation with Twilliger. Manning is not handicap accessible and we have employees who needed to have that accessibility in their building. And we had Fernside that is handicap accessible and it had lots of empty spaces on top of it as far as the fiduciary concerns that we, we both share. It's more efficient with energy and so we moved the Manning staff and that, you know, the old.
Old, uh.
Serbin, yeah, the, it kind of looks like a Frankenstein building with pieces of, you know, things kind of put together. We've moved everybody over. So we're getting this facility prepared to, in the event, we were looking to have a swap with the city, we will have a very viable option there.
Moves them like to Rawlings and next door to Rawlings.
So right now, everyone is in Fernside.
Fernside, right.
And, and that is, if you haven't visited Fernside, it's a very nice building and it was underutilized once Head Start moved out. So I think we're doing, it's a, you know, obviously it's inconvenient for staff to move. I totally understand that. But it's a higher quality space and it's ADA compliant.
All right, we just keep, we can kept up on what's going, if we just, like this, keep us up to date what's going on.
So I would love to meet with you and my staff and we've requested this. And so this is something we can do and we should do often. I know I meet with many board members on, some weekly, some bi-weekly, or every other week. So again, I'm happy to meet with you.
All right, anyway, okay, I got some answers. I, I appreciate it. But, you know, as long as we keep, keep up with it, that's all. I hear these rumors and a lot of people send me emails and.
So I think rumors are a huge problem. I've heard this entire board meeting, a considerable amount of rumors that are going around. And I think like, come to me and talk to me. Even like speaking with staff members without going to the, through the superintendent can be problematic because not only does it violate policy, but there are also maybe.
You said that to me and I don't know who I go see. I can't even.
I don't know.
Yeah, she, she said something about me going to see staff members. I was trying to figure out who I was.
When you talked about the interpreter, you said you spoke to staff.
No, I talked to people that I know from working here for years.
So they don't work here any longer?
No, no.
So that would probably be problematic to question people who don't work here, how the organization runs.
Well, I, I knew a pretty good amount. And anyway.
They no longer work here. So that's a problem, is what I'm trying to express.
That's why I ask questions.
I would be happy to meet with you again.
All right.
We will set that up for you again.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any of the lights. Okay.
But I would like to make this comment here. Earlier, there were, some folks asked what were we doing academic related? I am like, almost wanting to spin like a top because, I don't know if you recall when I first came on the board, that I was wanting to, us to have as one of our priorities, early literacy.
Yes.
Remember K through two? I thought it was really important that we've really got our youngest learners off to a really good start. And in this school year, we have implemented the Ufly Sale Program countywide. I had spoken with Dr. Holly Lane and one of her colleagues shortly after coming on and was really trying to get that. And so that's now in the district, district wide, where our staff is getting professional development on that particular program. And that is offered all over the district.
Yes.
Not just in one or two schools. And I'm, I am, I'm so hopeful for that, of the, the great outcomes that can come from that and us getting our learners off and our teachers being equipped to, to know how to teach students reading and the science of reading. And I don't know about you, I know I've had several teachers since I've been on the board to email and say that they needed additional support in teaching literacy, you know, teaching reading skills to, to students. So that is one good thing. So we've had a lot of COVID thrust upon us as an organization. But that's something that I think we're going to all be really pleased with the outcomes of that. It's new, it's a pilot program, but we haven't abandoned teaching and learning and looking at that. So I'm really, really enthralled about that. And I hate Pastor Rawls is left now. And that is something that would indeed address the opportunity gap, you know, because we do have in our schools that are SI schools, staffing that is less experienced. If we were to have, ask Dr. Simon to do a chart for us of the teachers and the staff that work in those schools, our SI schools, there we would find that a lot of them are young teachers or in this, less experienced teachers and, or they may come to teaching through alternative certifications. So this particular program is, would really be, is going to be a really big help to them and to equipping them with professional development and materials to help them be able to help our, our youngest learners. So that is something that we as a board can be really proud of, that that's being done. And thank you, Dr. Simon, for working with Dr. Lane and her staff to get that, that in our county district lot.
Thank you for, thank you for addressing that portion of the gap. Seeing no other.
Excuse me?
Lights? Okay. And I'm going to ask that you all get the, for my next last meeting, the, the little stickers straight with where we are. Dr. Simon?
Uh, thank you. Actually, I'm not even sure if my light goes on or not.
Turn, turn it on and let me see whose name pops up.
Are you seeing anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay. I, I did, so I, I've heard some of the feedback and I, and I appreciate board member certain statement about the teaching and learning. I think, you know, I know that we've had a lot of noise associated with the masking. We have a lot of, a lot of media, we have a lot of people who want to provide feedback. I, I do want to point out one, that I am supporting the board because this was the board vote. I, I don't make policy. I am the person who operates the district. And so what my responsibility is, is actually to act out your directive. And that's what I have been doing. Again, it has created a lot of noise and I think that unfortunately, and this is communication, Ms. Weber pointed out, which, you know, that is engaging the community and communicating what we are doing. These are things we always need to prove on. One of the things we're actually talking about is how we tell our story. And we are actually working on, we're actually developing right now our engagement into the community where we believe we can be face to face. Because one of the benefits that I have is I have a amazing team of colleagues. And so we can multitask. And the reason we multitask is because we have such a strong team to do the work that we do. And so we are doing early learning, decoding literacy in our K one, two in this county, which has never, ever occurred. With Dr. Holly Lane, we are the first countywide in the entire state of Florida to do this initiative. So we are bringing decoding and literacy into every one of our schools. And that is currently happening. Every student in those grades is having that experience. We also have many other things going on with our ESE programs. We have many other trainings and professional development. I've shared that we have this turnaround program for our principals where we are doing a turnaround and collabor- academy in collaboration with our state. We are doing everything that you need to do to educate a school district and fighting COVID. So we're doing more than what we usually do. And I think what we're usually doing right now is exceptional because we have a lot of initiatives going on. But one thing specifically that was brought up about students that are quarantining, because I think every parent should know this. So first off, I have thirty-eight students right now that are quarantined and that number might slightly change just because it's, you know, when we update this website. We are required to provide instruction to the students who are quarantined. They're actually not even considered absent. And we are required to document how we engage them while they are out. This is occurring. And if you have a child on quarantine and you don't feel you're having this experience, you need to contact the principal and the teacher because this is something we're required to do. And I can tell you, from what I have heard, when I engage with families and I ask them how it's gone when they were quarantined, they had that experience for their students. So I would just want to make sure that we're consistent in providing that to all of our families. So if you aren't having that, please let us know. Thank you.
Dr. Simon, I, um, let me find out if any of my colleagues need to say anything. Seeing none. I need to let you know that what you just did, you know, in sharing, I think that it's important at each meeting that you put, and I know we have a wonderful website, but it's good to have the leader to share some things that's going on in our district. And the reason I say that, because some of us even hesitate if we're not out and, and, and about in our schools or keeping up. We all have various things that keep us from being in the schools all of the time. And sometimes it's not the best thing for us. But if you don't say it, and you may think, well, I'm pushing, I'm, I am, what's the word, bragging on myself. We need to hear what's going on because great things are happening, not only with our schools that are under mandate by the state, but all of our schools have great things going on. And if we're not going to the schools ourselves, then we don't know and we rely on talking with you in our session or picking up the phone. Our citizens who are instructional staff are non-instructional, they call us and let us know what's going on. But I noticed that even with our announcements, like we used to have more than a year ago, where we had so many things that we could say, that declined because of us with COVID. But hopefully, when all of this, the variants, although I heard a new one was coming around, just landed in India yesterday. But hopefully we will be able to get back into the schools and be associated and actually feel for ourselves the great things that happen in the Elatra County Public Schools. I thank you. And I'm saying this with all the gusto that I have. And I know my colleagues can thank you as well. Because we are at a point in this school year of every single thing that we have had to do, had to accomplish, and it's being done. You have a awesome staff and who support you 100%. And as long as we have that, we are going to be incredibly amazing in this county, in this state. I know that many of our emails that we have received are so positive. And I thank those who write us the positive, as well as people who want to share things that we should be doing better. We have to listen to both groups, no doubt about it. And so I just wanted to say publicly how well that you are doing. I need to see you and Attorney Delaney after this meeting. We have some discussion that we need to have. But please know that this board, this chair, and my colleagues continue to support our leader. And the reason we do, because we know what we need for the students in this county. So I thank you for listening. It is nine oh one. We've had a long day and I know you are ready to go home. This meeting is adjourned.